The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome, everybody. For our town council meeting, if we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Angelo Christensen.
Present.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Gianoni.
Here.
Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Counselor Luddy.
Here.
Counselor Pacquiao.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Okay. We have some proclamations on our agenda, so we'll start with those first. First one is for Alex Dumas.
Or Dumis.
Dumis, okay. All right, either way, whatever. Hopefully, I got that right. There he is. There's the man of the hour. Hang on one second. Let me read a couple of things about you, Alex, and then we'll have you come up here, and we'll congratulate you. On behalf of the town council, I would like to congratulate Alex on being selected to Boy's State, where he proudly and honorably represented our town and Berlin High School. He was one of only 200 delegates from the state of Connecticut. Boy's State is a hands-on leadership program that allows the participant to experience government in a practical sense by actually participating in it. You can learn a lot by sitting here tonight, probably, too, Alex. Interesting. I am sure Alex had a wonderful time and learned some very valuable lessons about the running of our municipal and state government. From what I understand, from talking to others who have attended Boy's State in the years gone by, it is an experience that had a profound impact on their lives, and I am sure it will on yours. So congratulations. We appreciate you coming here tonight, so we can honor you and your family in front of everyone in the room and on behalf of the town. We're all very proud of you, so we're glad you're here. And I have a proclamation for you from the town council. So if you want to come up, meet me at the podium here, I'll read it and present it to Town Council, Town of Berlin, proclamation is hereby known to all that the Town of Berlin hereby recognizes Alexander Paul Dumis on being selected as the American Legion Boy's State representative for the Town of Berlin. Boy's State is among the most respected and selective educational programs of government instruction for U.S. high school juniors. It is a leadership program that teaches government and its structure. The program focuses on an array of pertinent and timely topics at both the state and local level. In recognition of his accomplishments and contributions to the Town of Berlin and Berlin High School, the town council congratulates Alexander and extends best wishes to him in all his future endeavors. And that's dated today's date, signed by me. So congratulations. Thank you. We do photo ops here. We'll charge you.
Mark?
Yes.
If I may, while you're taking photographs, I just wanted to just say that that young man is my nephew, Alex. So I'm a very proud Auntie Chuck tonight, and I just want to say...
I would have you...
It's okay. I just want to say what a pleasure and such an honor it's been. It is to be your aunt. I've watched him grow from just like the sweetest little boy to this just thoughtful, intelligent, kind, accomplished at the old age of, what are you, 16, 17 now? 17? 17? And just a really, just a wonderful, wonderful, very tall young man. But I'm so proud of you, hon.
Great. Well, thank you. Another round of applause. Great job. Job well done. Appreciate bringing all that positive vibes to the town. The second proclamation I have today is on, it's a little bit more of a sober note, unfortunately, but a celebration of Carolyn Wysocki's life, and so I have a proclamation here of the Town of Berlin Town Council. Carolyn Wysocki, who passed away recently. Carolyn was a loyal and dedicated town resident, serving the community in numerous ways for well over 20 years. Carolyn was the longest-sitting member of the Central Connecticut Health District Board of Health. She was one of the town's first appointees to the board when the town joined the health district in 1998. Carolyn served on many committees and served as the chair of the board. Her passion and commitment to the district was unparalleled and appreciated by her colleagues. Carolyn was also an avid advocate for the environment. She won the Green Circle Award from the Department of Environmental Protection, which honored local people who made a global difference. In 2009, she won the Berlin Citizen of the Year Award. So this is in recognition of her years of service to the Town of Berlin and many contributions she made to improve the quality of life in our community. The town council hereby remembers and recognizes Carolyn Wysocki, you know, in her memory and for her family. You know, volunteers on commissions like this, like the health district, they make our town run. You know, we're all volunteers on all of our commissions, including the council, and, you know, she put in a lot of time, and I know that was her passion, and so we want to recognize her tonight with this proclamation. I don't know if anyone's here. Anyone hear from the family? Come on up.
My mom's been involved with the town since I can remember, since I was born, and it was a passion of hers to... Her motto was, "Prevention is my intention," and that's what she wanted to do. She wanted to make the world a better place. She wanted it for her grandchildren, for the community, and for the world, and I really thank you. It's my honor to have this for her and her memory.
Oh, yeah. Ours, too, and I think she made us a safer place, obviously, with what she did for the health district, so, you know, on behalf of your mom. Sorry.
Thank you.
She's not here, but she knows. She's watching.
She knows.
She's watching.
She knows.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There goes our proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My condolences.
Our plaque for our Berlin Water Control Commission. This is a congratulations from the American Water Works Association to Ray Jammer of the Berlin Water Control Commission, and this is a service-to-the-water-industry plaque. It's congratulations on 50 years of membership in the American Water Works Association. So they sent this plaque as a token of appreciation for the long and valuable service to the water profession in Berlin, and recently, the names of all the companies being honored this year were announced and were shown on a slide in their meeting, so we appreciate that. I think we all know of the issues with water today, and so it's an important part of our town. It's a very important commission, so again, we appreciate this. I don't know if...
Yes, Ray.
Ray? Present the plaque to you. I know you've been working hard, Ray, to keep us safe and improve our water system, which is important to all of us, so we appreciate... I know you haven't been here for 50 years. Have you?
No.
No, no, I know that.
I'm five years shy.
Yeah, I know.
I hope to make a plaque as big as this when I'm here.
Yeah. We'll work on it. I don't know if we can afford it, but we'll try. So, yeah, there's the plaque for all the folks that came before you and have been on the commission. We appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Keep us safe. All right, thanks.
And I have to be thankful to many people before me because they had the foresight to actually join the AWWA. It's a very great organization. As I mentioned, I'm a few years shy of this, and hopefully, I'll get one just as large. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're done with our presentations tonight. Some great presentations. Again, thank you, Alex, family, Carolyn Wysocki, Ray. It's great we get to recognize people for all their hard work and volunteer work. So next on our agenda is, we have a very long agenda tonight, is our audience of citizens, where, you know, we have people that want to speak and give us something, give us any information they wish to. I would ask tonight, because we do have a long agenda, we obviously, we didn't have a meeting in August. Our last meeting was in July, so if you would keep your remarks to five minutes or less, I would appreciate that, so we can move on with our agenda. So first up is Barbara Gombach. Welcome, Barbara.
I'm here tonight to represent the Commission for the Aging.
Barbara, they're not going to hear you.
They're not? I'm here tonight to represent the Commission for the Aging, our new senior center, community center. The project has been discussed for many years, and the committee has proposed in 2016. However, no action was taken due to lack of funding. The present center was renovated in 1985. Due to the growing senior population, that is way outdated now. Not only for the... It's inadequate, but it's not safe. The parking is not safe. The landscape is not safe. So a grant was requested by Speaker Eris Simowicz to make it possible to move forward to plan and design a new senior center, community center. This should be the open process of input, of need, from the senior center and community center. I do want to state right here that the commission does not support a partnership with the Y. We feel that this building should be a Berlin building and supported by Berlin people without membership or restrictions or things from other places. So that is what we want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Next up, Tina. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tina Doyle. I am the director at the Berlin Senior Center, and I am the municipal agent for the elderly for the Town of Berlin. I am here tonight to let you know that September is National Senior Center Month, and this year's theme is senior centers building momentum, growing, learning, giving, and connecting. This year, senior centers celebrate their 75th anniversary. Just as older adults build on their past experiences and lessons, learn to create rich lives, senior center professionals are building on lessons learned from 75 years of experience and wisdom. We know through research the importance behind connecting older adults with others and making friends matter, that learning new languages and skills and exercising helps care for your body, that giving back at the center and within the community fosters purpose and a more meaningful life, and that as long as each of us lives, we want to continue growing to be the most we can be. Senior centers have built a complete experience where all of that is possible. This year, we will celebrate the many ways our senior center built momentum for people's health, economic security, and independence. Please feel free to stop in anytime.
Next on the sign-in sheet is Donna Bovee. What up, Donna? Welcome.
Thanks. I don't normally need a microphone, so...
[laughing]
My mother wanted to just shut it off, but anyway. I'm Donna Bovee, 85 Steepleview Drive. Tonight, I come before you as co-chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and Don Delacqua is also co-chair of the commission. He's in the audience. So as co-chair, I had emailed the mayor and subsequently followed up with the town manager requesting that one or two representatives from the Park and Rec Commission be named as part of the committee for the community center, obviously, along with our senior group. We just feel that that's very important. The commission will be reviewing the statement of need. The senior citizens' commission is drafted, and the director of Parks and Rec will be finalizing with our commission our statement of need at our meeting a week from Thursday, September 13th. The commission believes it's important that the council and the town obtain input and guidance from the various disciplines when committing to such an important community project that includes services, facilities, and, of course, the financial impact to our residents, and be open to various points of view. We believe our commission is an integral part of such future decisions. I do have one other second request, and that is, we understand a field committee is being formed again. Field committees have come and gone over the years. We believe, you know, the commission, again, should be a part of that committee. We look at fields use all the time. We work with the various groups in our communities. We have a lot of very knowledgeable resources, and so that, again, we're going to ask and be on record that we have at least, you know, one of our members be on that committee as well. Okay? So we're available for future discussions. Again, we know this is going to be a project, and there's a lot of steps, as Jack has talked about, maybe before the committee is formed, but we got it, you know. It would be very important to all of us that things be done with transparency, and we be part of that committee. So thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Thank you, Donna.
You're standing. You're up next. Perfect, yeah.
I'm Delacqua for Grapevine Lane, Kensington, Connecticut. Again, Donna mentioned a co-chair on part of the co-chair commission with the Park and Rec, and I just wanted to make sure that people knew that I was available and wanted to participate as well, like Donna. I think that we can add some value to both the Park and Rec and the community center project, so just wanted to...
Thanks, Don. Good to see you. Okay, that's the last of our signup sheet, and so we are now taking hands. The first hand I see, Mr. Speaker Eris Simowicz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Town council members, Joe Erisimowitz, 33 Langdon Court, Unit F3. Again, I'm here tonight. I know you'll be acting on accepting the grant of $750,000 to move forward with the process. Being a lifelong Berlin resident, sitting in the very seats that you're sitting in now for three terms, and then being at the state capitol, I think the community center is something that's long overdue in this town. Growing up, I used to go over to the old KGS, and believe it or not, we knew it was open because Steve Wozniarsz Nova was parked there, because he was actually working there. And we would go down, and there was concerts in the basement. There was a net where some folks hit golf clubs into the netting downstairs, but it was a community center. Various meetings were held there. When we lost that, we got a grant by then-state Representative Antandro, and it was a last-minute grant, and it was available to put it in the basement in the library, and it was always supposed to be temporary. For many years, many councils wrestled with the idea. There was multiple committees. I think there was folks that went out and did polling and talked about what the community needed in a community center. Those needs are still there. Being a coach at Berlin High School, I see these dedicated swimmers and divers each and every day that have never had a home meet in their entire careers. They've never had the ability to have senior night on their home field, which would be the pool. We have kids. Mr. Mayor, your son played football, but he also played basketball. We have kids that have nowhere to go play basketball. We have a Sunday night basketball league, put together by town kids that came through their system. They're a little older now, and they contract with the middle school, and they all have to put up their own money to do that. I think for the time, for a community center here in Berlin is here now. I'm very happy that you all have agreed to accept the grant and move forward with the process. I would ask that we listen to some of the folks that have been through it before and talk about the areas. Do it in a way that the community has input. I know you've embraced that idea, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to move forward with that. But I want to be a partner. I said it at the budget meeting, and the funds are there, and the senior center. I go over the senior center very, very often, and I see Barbara Gombach, and I know there's multiple logistical issues that the council and others are working on. But mixing the two populations, the youth population and the senior population, makes total sense. There's so many studies out there and evidence to back up that it helps both parts of our town. And that sense of community is needed in Berlin. I think sometimes we become quite divided by what we do, and having that community center will unite us. It'll allow us to have those places. Maybe we could even go back to the days when we had the haunted little house over at KGS, but having a community center where the kids can all come, a splash pad. I have many ideas, but I will be your partner. I will secure as much funding as we can. Let's just move forward with the process to get this done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck. Yes, sir. Dave, you're on. You're up.
My name is Dave Seer, 245 Cold Lane. I'm here tonight to discuss item 14 on tonight's agenda, which is page three, which is exactly what everyone else has been talking about, the $750,000 grant for a new senior center and a new community center. I was surprised, I was very surprised to read the announcement in the newspaper recently about a $750,000 grant for a new community center and a new senior center. That was the first time I heard about this potential new project, was when I read about it in the newspaper. I know that on the agenda, after each item, it says what department or what commission is related or involved with each item, and that particular one, it says economic development. I want to let you know that the Economic Development Mission, I'm a member, we have never had this on the agenda, and we've never discussed this project yet, just so you know, but I know it says that we're involved in it. I do not believe that you're going to have the support from Berlin residents for another massive project, like a new senior center and a new community center, until you fix the police station, and maybe not even after that. I think residents are very sensitive to big spending projects right now. Certainly, the police station has to come first, and we have to resolve that, and it hasn't been done. In addition, any massive project like this is going to require bonding. Our bonding is double normal levels, it's in the paper the other day. So we have to get our bonding dollars down. I think we're over $100 million in bonded dollars. That has to be reduced. Our finance director says normal levels are half of that, so we've got to get rid of $50 million worth of debt. So I'm not sure residents are going to be receptive to more bonding for a project like And I'm also afraid, and it's happened in the past, that a $750,000 study is going to end up in a three-ring binder on a shelf collecting dust. I'm sorry, it's a lot of money to spend for a study, but I think that's where it's going to end up, because I don't think the residents are going to go for it. I'd suggest that you table item 14 for tonight until we can properly discuss and vet it. I think we should form our own committee, and Donna Bovee volunteered for that. We should find, we should form our own committee to investigate and discuss this new senior center and new community center before we spend $750,000. Also, you may want to consider, and this is Joe would have to do this, repurposing that $750,000 for the police station. Keep in mind that most seniors are on fixed incomes, so while we want to help the seniors by building a new senior center, we're going to raise their taxes, and as we raise their taxes, they can't afford to stay here. So the very people we're trying to help, we end up hurting. I'd suggest we table the issue for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? While we are at the audience of citizens... Yes, sir. Don?
John O'Brien, 12 Vineyard Drive. Before you start scaring the people and the elderly about high taxes, come up with a figure, you know, is it going to be $25 a month more, $150 a year more? Axe of taxes, basically, was a disgrace to the taxpayers. They were going on a zero increase, you know, so of course, I'm at... Senior center, yes. We're way overdue for a senior center, and if Joe could bring $750,000 into this town, you know, I think we should take a good look at it. Probably won't be there again, or another town's going to take it. So don't go scaring the taxpayers like you've done in the past. Don't make it a political issue. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? We're still in the audience of citizens. Yes, ma'am.
Mayo Chase, 125 Mildrum Road in Berlin.
Welcome.
I have a question. Obviously, we would love to see a senior center. I don't know whether any lands have been looked at. I don't know whether the feasibility of perhaps adding on to the auditorium at the present senior center, that is really, it's very small, the screen is too small and so on, and if they went out that wall where the windows are now, they would have access to the parking because if they came into the building underneath the new area, they could put in elevators, which I think would be helpful. I don't know how far $750,000 goes. Not very far. I don't think you could buy the doorstep for that, right?
That building belongs to the Berlin Housing Authority.
So are the seniors, is there senior living there now? I don't know. I'm asking. Here he is.
Tina, if you're going to respond...
Oh, please, sorry.
You need to be on mic.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
My thought was perhaps something could be done to help renovate the building. I'm not saying it's going to be pristine, and it's not going to be as good as it is in other towns, but it's just a possibility. We're also located in Stonington, and they have a thrift store where people go in and bring clothing and furniture and so on, and the proceeds go to the recreation department, which takes a huge load off the town budget. So there are ways around it, and they have a beautiful community center, a little Greek revival building and racquetball and a lot of Cajun dancing lessons, I mean, all kinds of things going on without them spending a whole lot of money on it. So it's just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input, as always. Anyone else? Before we close the audience of citizens. Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the audience of citizens. Before we move on, so that topic is item 14. We will get there as quick as we can tonight, unfortunately, because we've had this recess for the month of August, which was just wonderful. We're back, and we have a lot of business to take care of. But so on the senior center, please, everyone is welcome to stay, but what, you know, one of the things, I know I discussed it with Joe, is before we jump off with committees and studies and all this, I think what we need, and I think I hear it tonight here at the meeting, so it convinces me more, that later this month, late September, early October at the latest, I wanted to have a public, not a hearing, a public meeting, just so, and get it out to the public. so, and get it out to the public, that we can have many more members of the public come forward with some thoughts and ideas, and we can also express to them what may or may not be on the table. I think it's worth, beside the council meeting, this meeting and the next meeting, I think probably sometime after our second meeting in September, we have a meeting maybe at the high school auditorium, and we could talk about some of these issues and get it all on the table before we jump off and head down the road. The building, I mean, we've had a few discussions about costs of buildings like this, and you know, the building's probably with a pool somewhere in the range of, you know, minimum $20 million, $25 million, I don't know, maybe as high as $30. We don't know. We have no plans. We have no formal discussions. We don't even have identified, we have not identified the piece of property yet that would go on, which would hopefully be a piece of town property that the town owns. So when you put in a pool, if that's what people want, which we need to get that input, what do people want? I agree, a pool has been asked for, an indoor pool, for a long time. We do have a swim team. I think they deserve a pool. The basketball courts, I know many of our young people, my son included, as Joe mentioned, played basketball, and he had to go to Plainville Y or Southington Y to play basketball in the winter. That's not good for any town, so we need to come up with a solution for that to happen. But, you know, we put in a pool, that's probably $1 million maintenance a year out of the town budget. So there's, you know, ongoing costs, too. So before we make that jump, obviously, a project of that dimension would also go to the voters as a referendum vote, right? In our charter changes recently, any project over $5 million would go to the voters for approval or disapproval when we get that far. We're not anywhere near that far yet at all. So, you know, we'll discuss it. This is really the first time the council has been together to discuss this $750,000, and although we've had some discussions about senior centers and YMCA's and different things over the few months, but all very informal. So, you know, we need to formalize it a little bit more, but I think we need, because I've heard, and I'm sure all of our councillors have heard, people on both sides of, you know, of this issue, yes, no, I mean, I get all kind of different opinions. So I would propose that, that we do that, but we can discuss that when we get to item 14, but that's just my personal thinking, and we will all be able to, you know, express that tonight and figure out, you know, how to proceed. It's a lot of money. We are in a large amount of debt. I think we'll have some presentations, I think, in our next council meeting about the percentage of debt and how our general revenue doesn't cover it, and obviously, we're making some serious debt payments that are still going up. So it's just part of the discussion. On the other hand, the discussion is services for the town of Berlin, for our seniors, for our young people, very, very important, no doubt about it. We've been wanting for some of these, you know, projects, be it the pool, be it the gymnasium, you know, a better senior center, maybe some things updated for a long time. So that's certainly very, very important to all of us here, in town, on the council, everyone. And, you know, there has been no really discussion within the commissions, and Dave Seer, our chairman of economic development, points that out, they haven't been involved at all because we really haven't had any discussions yet. It's all been very informal. So I think we need to include, obviously, the, you know, the town committees that will be involved in this initially, so, because there is, you know, we really have no plan, and that is part of what we need to do before we move forward. But also on our agenda, unfortunately, is, you know, the police station, too. That's been there for a while, that's been there for a long time as well. So, you know, we certainly have many, many projects in Berlin we need to do. Every one of them is important. It's very hard to prioritize. They're all extremely important, but at some point, it comes down to who's paying the bill, and we know who's paying the bill, all of us are paying the bill. And we're paying a very large bill right now to our bonded debt. This year was, I think, the payment, last year was $2 million. This year, our bond payment is, I believe it's three and a half, and I think it goes up next year. And it goes up, I think, another year or two after that. And then we will start seeing the decline of our debt. The debt is from many different projects, it's just we're in that cycle. It's not, you know, good or bad, it's just where we are. And we have to pay it down because that's money, so that three and a half million, that four million the year after, or the five million the year after, until we see a decline in our debt payments, much like our mortgage payments, that's money that would go to, you know, town services and different projects. We don't have it because we're paying down our debt. So that's the very, very tough situation. The town manager, all the town, you know, the board of finance, the town council, all of us that you placed here, we wrestle with that probably every council meeting, you know. Tonight, you'll see many things on the agenda, money we need to do, projects we need to add money to, and again, you know, we know who's paying the bill. So we're very, very sensitive to that, but sensitive to the needs of the town. So it's a very tough time we're in, and it's going to get better. Working on paying it down. So I think ultimately, Berlin right now is in pretty good financial shape, but we don't want to go the other way. Because if we, if we get some bad bond ratings or, you know, debt ratings, that our debt's too high, when we do have to borrow money, we pay a higher interest rate, right? Just like you do if you go buy a car or you buy a home. If, you know, credit report's not so good, you pay a higher interest rate. So those are the things we face all the time, and, you know, it really, we, all of us up here, and, you know, whether it's economic development, town manager, whoever, we do really stress over it. I know I do, and we try and do the best we can for all of us. So that's the situation we're in. But so definitely going to have some, we need to have some very meaningful discussions about it, and, you know, so we'll talk a little bit more about it on item 14, and we'll come to at least some conclusion tonight, and then we can see what the best step is to move forward. So so we'll move through our agenda. I'll try and get to, if you want to wait, that'd be great, get to our item 14 as quickly as we can. So we are on our consent agenda now. So I guess we'll take, we've, with our consent agenda, generally speaking, it's, I always feel bad that we don't read this, because people don't, I know it's posted, I know they can see it, but we, we all get copies up here in the council, so we review it, and we just take a vote for the whole thing in the interest of saving some time. It's generally donations that are made to the town, and, you know, generally, that's most of it, which is accepting these donations. I think that's everything I see on the list tonight. So to move the meeting along, we'll take a motion on this.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the 10 items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Okay, move off of that. We will move to new business, and that would be item number one.
Agenda item number one is requesting permission to apply for a grant for a part-time social worker for the library. They've had an increased need for social worker. Their patronage has changed, and they'd like to some education. Helen Malink is here to discuss it and how we'd like to make this application, along with four other towns. So it would be a joint application, and then the individual that would be hired with this grant would not be an employee of the town, but would be in the role of a consultant. So Helen's here to discuss it.
Helen.
I'm the director of the Berlin Peck Memorial Library.
The elevator working okay?
It's working great.
Good. Glad to hear it.
I know you don't like to hear about grant and library in the same sense.
No, no, it's all right. We're all good. It's all good.
But libraries are changing, along with other agencies in town, and we are discovering that we are home to people that have mental health issues, people that are homeless. The library is a safe place. It's a shelter. It's warm in the winter and cool in the summer, and it has all different materials that they can look at for no money at all. However, it brings a whole other set of issues, and staff are not trained to handle these kinds of problems. And I know how our town social services department is already very, very busy, and I thought maybe if I could apply for a grant from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain for a part-time social worker that would rotate among Berlin, New Britain, Plainville, and Southington, maybe spend a day at each library for a few hours, that they could help not only the people, but help staff with some education on how to get through some trying times. So I'm just asking for permission to talk to the foundation and put in an application for a grant. Not asking for your money. I'm asking for their money.
Okay. Questions for Helen?
I just have a comment. In the action needed, it lists the name of the community foundation wrong. There is no Connecticut in its name.
Ah, okay. Is it just the Community Foundation?
Community Foundation of Greater New Britain.
Thank you. We'll fix that in our motion. And so Helen, just I have a question.
Sure.
So I think that's great. I know our social service department is stretched to the limit as well, so this would be a good addition. I'm assuming we would, you know, we're going to advise people in Berlin, you know, and help them, direct them to programs or.
Definitely.
Whatever, whatever else they, help we can give them. So that hopefully will supplement Doug, you know, Mr. Truitt's.
Correct. Yeah, I have a meeting with the foundation this coming Thursday.
That's great. So do you know, like, so this grants year-by-year basis, is that how it is pretty much with that?
I'm going to, that's what I'm going to try to do.
If we can knock it out a few, you know.
That's what I'm going to try to do.
Yeah, great. I know you'll.
I am frugal. You wouldn't know it by an elevator, but I am.
No, no, no. We know that. I'm sure, I know you're a tough negotiator, so whatever you could get in this area would, I think, be a good thing, is my opinion, but whatever else.
I have a question, too. When you say part-time, would it be a part-time person, so less than 40 hours?
Correct.
Amongst the four towns?
Correct.
Or just part-time for us, but a 40-hour person?
No, no, a part-time person. I'm envisioning, and that's what I'm going to suggest to the foundation, just someone to come in, like, from 10 to 1 every day, so 20-hour position, maybe? That would still serve the four towns.
Who are you meeting with at the foundation, Dave or Jolene?
Jolene will be there, and I don't know which big.
Dave Obazinski?
I don't know if the head honcho will be there or not, but.
If you need any type of letter of recommendation, I know Dave and Jolene, so I'd be happy to do so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Helen? Questions? Okay, well, thank you, Helen, very much.
Okay.
We'll take a motion on this.
Okay. Move to approve the Berlin Peck Memorial Library, applying for a grant through the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain to pay for a part-time social worker to be shared by four libraries in neighboring towns, Southington, New Britain, Plainville, and Berlin.
Right, second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Number two. Wait, oh, yes, sir.
In the interest of time for these people.
You want to move them up?
Why don't we move 14 up to next?
Let's do it.
And let them have a good night.
Yeah, well, I was hoping they'd go through some of the pain with us tonight, but that's okay. We'll take the pain ourselves. It's all right.
We move 14 up to number two, please.
Yeah, second on that?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 14. Here we are.
Okay. Well, we're requesting, as part of the process for applying for the grant, we need to have the, the town authorizes, with the attached resolution, so that we can start the application process. Currently, Jim Mahoney and Chris Edge are working on the application. That's probably why it's listed under economic development. We have been getting input from other, from other people, but we are in the process of getting together the paperwork so that we can get the application, and so we would secure the grant. Chris is here to discuss this and answer any questions.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, usually, community-wide grants, particularly ones that Jim Mahoney has worked on, will come through economic development, and again, this is presented by economic development. Look forward to kind of going through the process, getting public input, and we're working very closely right now with Jack and the mayor and others to definitely get as much public feedback as we can to find out what the center should be, who should be benefiting, and how we go about the process.
Okay. Yes. Peter, anybody?
No.
Questions? Concerns?
No, I just wanted to bring up that Jack and Kevin had a great write-up for the budget proposal this year. So there's some information in there that I think everybody should have, or at least know about. We do have a capital management committee, so I'm just going to read this short paragraph of who's on that committee, okay? The committee consists of the town employees representing each of the key capital asset departments, shall form the capital management committee. This committee will include representatives from the public works, the public grounds, the public buildings, highway, board of ed, technology, police department, fire department, the town garage, purchasing and accounting. The committee will meet at least monthly, and will be chaired by the town manager or finance director, or the finance director's designee. The committee is not a public agency of the town and shall be advisory. Now, you should, had a great 10-year plan, showed, you know, some of the immediate needs. And I'm just going to bullet point the five priorities, prioritization of how things made your list. You have safety, community input, cost, alternative financing options, legal or regulatory requirements. So for me, I would love to know if your capital management committee would meet, and then incorporate some of these other people that are requesting to be on it before we move forward with approving or disapproving this. Because also, that's not included in our 10-year plan. I'll just read off the projects that are on here that did not make any of our plan, that have been on here forever, that everybody's talked about. The community center is listed here, it's got a number plug of $20 million. It doesn't say senior center, and I think that's an interesting concept to think about combining the two centers in the future. You have on here a new police station, a new garage facility, Patterson Way property, you know, the property across from the high school. You have Sage Park front reconstruction, the road we've been testing for years, we don't know what to do with that. We have Zippadelli Field Artificial Service, and we're trying to take care of that. We have library first-floor renovation because of the community centers in there. Develop a new business park, that's from the economic development. We have, the Golf Driving Range is still on here. Crystal Creek Field Development, Pettit Field addition, they want a field for the Challenger Division. All these things on here that was in the budget that we should have all seen is $53 million worth. So I would like more input from Jack, your committee, and from these other people that were requested on the committee. And maybe we table it for a little bit until we can have some more information. We have no plan for this, although it's been out there, and I agree, something has to be done. It's obvious to me, because I've been to KGS years ago, too. I mean, you're right, Joe. I mean, we lost, you know, indoor facilities for basketball courts. When I took my kids to town league basketball, you know, you're fighting two coaches in half a gym, everybody's blowing a whistle, and the kids are spinning their heads, they don't know who's blowing the whistle, their coach or the other coach. You know, it's fun to, fun to watch. So I would like more input. I think we have to have a plan, and we have to see if, you know, even with the finance board, how do we fit in something in a long-term plan before we jump into something we don't have a plan.
I feel like I'm missing something here. I mean, is this just an application? This is just the application for the grant? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I'm at a loss as to why we wouldn't want to move forward with an application for the grant.
Because it's $750,000.
I'm aware of that.
For a study of which we might not have the capital to do anything about this.
I'm aware of that, Amy. Thank you, but.
So we might be spending.
Right.
Money that we don't need to.
I understand that. I understand that. But it's an application, and I don't, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
And I'm also at a loss for words with this. It's, you know, this is something that's needed for our children and for our seniors. I mean, our seniors have built our country, have built our town. Our children are our future, and Representative Raisimowitz has worked to get us the opportunity to at least investigate, and we might table it or not move forward with something as simple as a grant application. I'm dumbfounded by it. I really think it's irresponsible.
Well, in comparison, we approved $8,500 to further study the police station in this building. It would be great if we had some other information, what can we do with that $750,000? A study shouldn't cost $750,000. And what do we do with the rest of the money? Could we hold it and sit on it for a while? How many years? That's my question.
I did have a question about that, too, Joe. Like, are we able to allocate the money towards any of our other pressing issues?
Shut up, Joe. You're here. You made that mistake, you're here, so.
Thank you. So the $750,000 does not have to be spent in its entirety. It's an allocation. It's an allocation to the town to start the process. The process, if I was sitting in your seats, as I once was, is you'll probably need the statement of need from the various boards that would utilize a building like that. The town council then would do, probably hire a consultant to look at the available parcels of land in the town, review two or three of the other studies that were done before to find out what should be contained in a community center slash senior center, what are the needs, probably talk to the boards and commissions to find out what they envision the needs, even do tours of other community centers around the state and in various locations. Find out exactly what the upkeep of the pool is. All of that information gathering is called a study, but that's well-spent money. That's ensuring that you all have the answers moving forward. You may, if you decide on a parcel of land based upon what came forward out of your initial discussions of what the footprint should look like, you may have to do environmentals. If it's a town-owned piece of property, do the environmentals. The grant would pay for that. The idea of the $750,000 is to get you all the way up to the point in time to which you could then approve a project that I would guess would have to go to the voters. Knowing that it's a financial strain on the town of Berlin, I thought the state, I would allocate the money to you to at least get that started, to have all the information necessary. So could it be done, and then ultimately the town doesn't move forward at the time? I guess that could happen, but at least you'd be making that decision with all available information, with, with the architect's renderings, the community input, the soil samples, everything done, and then you could decide what it should look like moving forward. And I know I've heard before, you know, the $750,000 from the state, that's our money too. Rest assured, if the town of Berlin wasn't getting it, it was going somewhere else. And I see no better thing to go forward with than really getting the information needed to decide what it should look like if we should move forward and what the ultimate cost would be.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Does that help, Amy?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions, Joe.
Sure.
Thank you for coming and answering questions. If any amount of that money is not used as a result of the study, can any of that be allocated towards the actual project?
Um, yes. I would envision, and I can't give any certainties, there's an election this November, so that's one of them. I would envision, and as I spoke of it as a partnership, if you were to move forward, that there would be a large portion of which that I would get the funding for. But if you're moving down the road and say you hired the consultant, you did the land study, you did the community input, you did all that, you spent $300,000, and that was it, you decided at that point just to stop, you could do that, and then the monies would just roll back. I envision it that the Office of Policy Management will be releasing the monies to you in batches, or as you see fit. So, and that's what the application process would have to go forward, is how much money you'd need right away and what that would look like. I think we referred to it, Mr. Mayor, when we spoke as stage one. What does stage one look like? And that's where you were going to get your input from your counselors and your other boards. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. It does. And then the second part of that is, and I know it might be partially based on speculation, to what extent do you believe we can secure more grants to pay for the new building if and when we get to that point? And, you know, how much do you envision we can get based on historical context?
It's always hard to say. So I want to be somewhat careful and not mislead any of you. You're, you're, you have to make decisions on what you know. I will tell you, past history shows that when individuals involved in state service rise to a level, as they're finishing their careers, they are allowed to pick a project to be their, their crown project. I would consider the community center slash senior center my crown project. So it would be my last priority, given if I'm reelected in November, I've already stated I'm not running anymore. So this will be my last act, or my swan song, or whatever you'd like. So I can't guarantee that I would get it, but it would be absolutely my number-one priority.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes.
Joe, is the grant a reimbursement grant, like, you know, like with the bridges and things? So we, the town, you know, I'm asking, because I know Kevin and I did some planning today. We're looking at, you know, what funds we have. Would it be a reimbursement grant, or is it a grant that we give up front?
I will work with you whatever way you need it. If we need monies released sooner to get you up and running, so the town doesn't want to put itself into floating the money till you get it repaid, I understand that. I will work with whatever you want to do. I truly want to be a partner on this. I'm not trying to muscle around or anything. I want to move forward in a way that makes sense for the town and all of you. I appreciate the time and dedication you do on the council. All right. Yes, Amy?
Are there.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Are there any concerns with this, similar to the funding that we had from, you know, the state for our schools, and then that actually got kind of like pulled back and changed as the state made it further into a fiscal year?
Yeah. Because of the way that the funds are, are moving forward, and because it's bonding, and it was already authorized by the bond, bonding committee, no. The money is allocated and we'll just draw down on it. The budget in which the governor altered the funding, it was an absence of a budget by the general assembly. So we, we threw him out of the room and did two budgets without him. So we, we brought the money back to Berlin.
Thanks, Joe.
No problem.
One more. I keep peppering.
Longer I stand here.
Could this study be used as Mrs. Mayo, is it Ms. Mayo or Mrs. Chase? She came up. She said, could it be used to add onto or renovate the existing building? Could the study be part of that? Or does it have to be a separate building? Because I, what the documents I have, I couldn't really find any contingencies or conditions on the contract.
Yeah, no, I think that's an absolutely fair question. Again, not to micromanage. I think it's up to you as individuals. I, I have the goal of moving forward with a senior center, community center, and what shape that takes and what it looks like. I think the community, as long as the community has input and you guys are elected by that community, I feel comfortable moving forward. So it's not like I'm saying, although I have a vision of what it would look like in my head and I'd like to see, I would never, I would never give an edict down to you that it must look like this. I'm willing to work with you and be a partner. Let's talk about it, see what works best for the town.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I also ask a question, Joe, actually for Tina?
Sure.
I'm under the impression that we couldn't expand the current senior center. Is that correct?
Yeah, we.
Kate, yell at her.
No. I'm used to talking loud. I'm one of seven too, so when you're at the end of that line, you learn to talk loud to be heard. The senior center, the building is owned by the Berlin Housing Authority. It is not our building. It is leased by the town. Yeah, a number of years ago, it was put out to add on to the current facility, and the town voted it down.
Right. And another question, just because I have personal knowledge that seniors sometimes have some spills or falls when they try to walk into or exit the senior center. Do you see that because of the way that?
Right, that is an issue.
Yes.
The hill that the parking lot is on is a very big issue, and we have tried to come up with a number of solutions to resolve that issue. We have the ample amount of parking for handicap per state requirement. The regular spots up front, what we did was we put signs and did a amount of honor system for folks with limited mobility, and people have been honoring that. So we've created a few more spots there, but that issue comes up constantly about having to come down the hill and go up the hill.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I know you called my mom after she fell. So I, I feel that the senior center is wonderful, but where it is and the location, et cetera, in terms of the grounds, the incline and decline, you know, it's, it's not the best spot for our seniors. And going to something that is more accessible for all people, especially those with some disabilities or using any type of durable medical equipment, like a cane or a walker or wheelchair, would be most beneficial for our senior population.
Okay. Yes, Peter?
Yeah, I, I want to speak in favor of this. I mean, all I hear tonight is how everyone wants to plan something, and, you know, we got to plan this, and, well, that's all we're asking for, is some money to plan out what we want in the future. Our state representative is the Speaker of the House. I mean, do I have to draw a picture for everyone here? And I'm going crazy why anyone would be against this. This is merely seeking a grant to plan exactly what we want to plan, with the parking wrecks, with the chairman of the, who didn't, who hasn't heard of this up until tonight, and I'll talk to him about that when I see him. But I, I think we beat this horse to death. Let's just get on with it, and if anyone's against this, please explain to me why they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to, you know, Peter, I was, I appreciate what you said, and I got some better information from Joe. And you're right, you know, it's just a plan for now, and we don't have to spend all the money. And it'll come to a point where we'll have to vote on whether we move forward with the project. You know, we desperately need it, something in the town to, you know, if it's a combined project to help our youth and our seniors. I mean, I've seen these projects out to bid. It seems to be the trend, trying to combine services. Maybe we save money, we can combine offices and personnel instead of running between two, two buildings. So you're right. I appreciate your, the way you put that.
Sure. Yes, Barbara, of course. For you, yes. Absolutely.
I just want you to know that this is not a new project for us. We have looked into this. We have, we did a study of the parking lot. We tried to configure how we could take trees down and add more handicap parking. It's not a good situation with people with walkers and canes coming down that hill, and you say we have adequate amount of handicap parking. Adequate for who? When we came out of that senior center one day, eight people came out, six people had canes. So, you know, you have to realize that this is a different population. It's not a stop-and-jump population or something like that. So I, we have looked into this. We've looked into it in several different ways, and we were told by the housing authority, don't plan to make any changes here because it's not going to happen. It belongs to the housing authority. First of all, they told us they don't have the money, and they don't have the inclination to make changes there. So I think that's a good place to start, that we cannot make changes there. So I don't know if you have any other questions? And as far as the, the money, I was told that the money has to be used for this project. So, you know, how we do it, how it's allocated, I appreciate Joe finally looking into this because we proposed this two years ago, and we've been looking into it for longer than that. So I don't think we should, I mean, I don't know about tabling or anything like that, but I think we should definitely start the process because it's going to, we don't know where the money will go. Do we want to give that money up and leave it on the table for somebody else? You know? I don't know. So, I mean, that's my thought on it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this, because I've been at this for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. If, no, no more. We, I, I can't.
No, we can't.
No. No. Really.
Just read it.
All right. Yeah, we can't. All right. So, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? I have a question for the, the other council members. If we do decide to.
That's order here, John. All right. It's not your private meeting. Thank you.
If we do decide to approve this application today, what would be the next step? Who would be on the spearhead? Would there be a team, a committee? That's something I propose to all of you as far as, you know, how would we proceed there if we decide to go down?
I would offer to be on the committee. I have worked with seniors for 34 years, and actually, I worked at the Plainville Senior Center as their nurse for 10 years, and through, during that period of time, I was there when they renovated the first time. So I'm pretty comfortable working with seniors and for seniors, and I'd be happy to work with Donna and with Tina.
Is that economic development's purpose to, to get involved in a study and spearheading that?
I, I think at this point, it's really going to be up to, to Jack and the mayor. I mean, if, if, if we're asked to be part of it, we will, but no, we're just bringing the, we're just bringing the grant forward. That's really our entire role at this point.
I think it would be us.
Yeah, we, we've got, what's occurring, we received the, the paperwork to get the application. So procedurally, within, within the town, the staff was just preparing the application so that, you know, as a procedural thing, we'd secure the money, have it available. What I, what, what Jim Mahoney and Chris and, and we've talked about, we've gotten letters from people saying they want to be on the commission, committee, is I, we're laying out a process for you so you could discuss a process, and that would include forming a committee. And I would, I would, what I would envision, like normally what you would do, is you would, you would secure people, you know, from the boards, commissions, who want to be, you know, get volunteers. Plus, I think you want volunteers from, from at large. You would form a committee of certain size to have them, you know, start to put that together. The other thing that we, you would normally have is you would have a public hearing so that you could have people voice their opinion on what you want to do, and you would go through that process. And once you start to put together those ideas, then you would have an RF, an RFQ, you would, you know, that group would look into putting together like a scope, a statement of need, as Joe would say. And from there, if, if the scope was a certain size, you have to go to the Public Building Commission, name in as a project after that. But that's down the road. So I, I see right now is, is, you know, you approving, let us go forward, we're getting the application for, for the funds. And then subsequent to, you know, parallel path to that, you, you start to have the informational meeting that the, that the mayor discussed. You have the, the, the community come in, talk to you, and also you think about, you know, going out and, and advertising for volunteers, you know, from the commissions, you know, the two, you know, have already sent in letters to us, plus whoever else would want to be. And then you would, you know, you would vet those people, and you, and you would, you would put together a team to start to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. You're preparing. I mean, you're working on this already.
We, we, once we had it, I'd gotten a call from the representative, the speaker's office, you know, actually telling me, you know, at first, it was funny because they, they called it. I wasn't aware of any project. I told them there was no project, so take it back. And we got to quite a discussion. So, they corrected me, Joe, right? And so, we started to secure the paperwork. Jim Mahoney is working on the paperwork, as we would normally with any grant. But before we go forward, we need to have the town council's approval before we do anything. But we wanted to make sure we had the paperwork ready so that we could get it in.
Okay. I mean, I think we've heard a lot of input tonight and that's wonderful. I'm sorry, but I still think we need just a little bit more. I just think a two-week... I mean, you're working on it.
Yep.
And, you know, if we can wait till our next council meeting, I would propose we table it. I want to try and get that public meeting now rather than later. And, you know, if we submit it, we submit it. But, you know, and everyone has great thoughts and they're all worth hearing. And... But I don't, you know, we don't have anything identified. We have... You know, the concept, of course, we're all for it. I mean, that goes without saying. But concept to where we have to go is a very, very long way. And I think, you know, I've heard, just because I've heard from the voters this last week since it was in the paper, and the last few days, actually, I've heard both sides. So, I think it's worth one more hearing. We can get it done in the next couple of weeks, maybe at the high school if we could pick a night and do that first. I think, at least for me, we can take a vote tonight on whether we want to table it or not. If you want to do that, that's fine. But I just think the public input is so important, it's going to them anyway, obviously way down the road if it... Whatever the cost is if we end up doing what we're thinking about doing. But we don't even know that yet. We haven't even checked with other towns and other town commissions. I like to look before I leap. That's me. That's how I have always done things. But, you know, I think two weeks is not going to change. We've been... I've been heard the community center for, you know, for maybe 20 years now. And maybe before that even. Not that I want to delay anything, but the public input is so, so important because I've heard both sides and it's probably 50/50 right now. And ultimately, we are the elected officials. We have to make a decision and I know we all will. But I don't think two weeks is going to make or break anything in this process as long as, as you said, parallel. You're working on this. You can present it at the next meeting if we could put this hearing together, which should be nothing more than advertise it. And if we could find a night, maybe at the high school, seems to be the most comfortable forum. And maybe we have just a little bit more information to put out to the public. And then, we move forward and, you know, obviously then we can put a more specific commission together, you know, whether it's with council members, with other commissions and boards and members of the public that are interested in helping out.
So, I have a question with what you just said. Are you saying that within the next two weeks, we get a hearing together? And two weeks from tonight, we bring it to a vote? Or are you saying, "Let's get a hearing and then whenever the hearing is, two weeks after that, we'll get it to a vote"? Can you clarify?
Yeah. As soon as possible. I said that we would delay it for two weeks and see if we can get some more public input and give them the information. Because, you know, there was a newspaper article, I believe, there was a press release by Joe. But people have a lot of questions and their questions, some of ours were answered tonight, but some of theirs are not answered yet. And they're the ones that are going to pay for it. And I think they need to at least get a preliminary focus of what we're doing. It seems like nobody's focused on anything right now. We have a lot of different thoughts on things. The ultimate community center, senior center, yes, the concept is wonderful. We all want that. But let's at least get the information from the town and from our experts in the town and from council members out to the public. It's not out there.
Information from the town as to whether to apply for the grant?
I know, it seems a little ridiculous.
Information on what they want us, what they want us to do. Well, I mean, you may think so. I mean, I understand, you know, but the voters and the people of town don't... Don't... They don't know.
So thrilled, everything you see, "Oh, this is great" and Berlin buzz and it's...
That's not what I've heard. So, I don't, you know, that's fine. But I've heard different things. Two weeks is not going to matter, I don't think, Karen.
Well, I don't see that it's going to be on our agenda in two weeks. That's what I'm questioning because I don't think that we can get a town, a public hearing in two weeks' time and get it on the agenda again in two weeks. I don't believe that.
An informal meeting. Well, we will try.
Well, I think trying and doing is two different things. Did you have something, Peter?
Yes, Peter.
Just that by passing this and requesting the money, everything we want to know will be answered. Because in part of the... The process is for public hearing and go to the townspeople. We're not committing any funds tonight. We're just looking for money for planning. Now, if I heard one thing, everyone wants to plan this. Well, if we get this money, and we should, then we can plan. And in that process is public hearings. We're not committing any money, you know, $20 or $30 million tonight. We're merely looking for a start.
Why wait?
Jack, since you've already told us, you've had this ahead of us. You know, it was new to us. That's why I think we had a lot of questions. So, I personally don't have a problem moving forward with it and just get it done.
Great. So, let's bring it to a vote.
Make... Take a vote. Make a motion.
Move to approve the attached resolution to authorize the town manager to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction for a $750,000 grant for the planning and design of a senior center and community center to enter into necessary agreements and documents to secure the grant or amendments thereto, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council, and appropriate $750,000 to the Community Center and Senior Center Development Fund Act, architectural and engineering fees subject to approval of the Board of Finance.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Nay. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number, what, this is number two or...
Hold on, Jack. So, thank you, folks. So, what I would propose we do, we voted to move this forward, at least with the application. And, you know, we've made no commitment on funds yet. We... I will still put together in the next two to three weeks, we'll do a public, not a hearing, just a meeting, just an informal, very informal, we'll get some information out to the public. I think that's so important that we all can have a chance to speak and more people, if we get it out in the newspaper quickly, can come to a better, a little bit more comfortable forum than this and express their opinions. And we can tell us, you know, tell them what we're thinking. And, you know, the application is still moving forward. That's fine. But I think we need that and I'll try and put that together as quick as possible. So, thank you all. And 14 is over and we'll move back to our regular agenda. Thanks, everybody. You're all welcome to stay. Oh, don't leave. Come on, we've got a long way to go. It's all right. Thank you. Thank you, folks. We appreciate it very much. Good night.
Agenda item number two, the Berlin Home Care and School Healthcare Nurses Contract Renewal. Denise Parsons and I have been working with the nurses to... On their upgrade of their... Renewal of their contract. It expired on June 30th. We started to look at this in March. We had several meetings and have come to a contract agreement. Denise is here to give you the particulars.
Good evening.
Hi, Denise.
I'm glad that the audience all left now because I could never stand up here talking to you. So, we had our nurses' contract expire last June. We did get the group together. We started talking in March. They actually approached us and asked if we would be interested in doing an off-the-record conversation without the attorneys present. And I think because of the relationship that we have with this group, it was pretty easy to do. So, between the union president, myself and Jack, we kind of had several conversations. We did get some, I think, significant language changes for the town going forward. And I'll go through them real quickly with you. They're identified in your agenda item. But we did initially updated the language regarding the union affiliation based on the new ruling of the Janus versus AFSMI. So, that's been cleaned up. We removed references regarding the homemaking employees because, as you know, they're no longer part of the VNA services. Increased minimum hours to be benefit eligible from 28 to 30. This is in compliance with new healthcare reform, the 30 hours. So, this is actually the first union contract that we've gotten that 30-hour limit. All of the others are still 28, so we'll be pushing that as we go forward. We reduced the annual floating holiday and the annual personal day allotment for new hires, which is a pretty significant win for us. We adjusted vacation time for new hires as well to provide prorated vacations scheduled in the first year of employment. This was actually a management proposal, even though it is a benefit that we're adding to employees because we've been having some issues with new hires who previously had to wait more than a year to take a vacation once they first started. So, we're just trying to keep up with the times. We clarified the workday for school nurses, including the half-day professional development days. As you know, the school increased the number of half-days of PD they had over the last several years. So, our school nurses, we just needed some adjusted language there to ensure that they were actually working a full day and not taking the half-days. We clarified... Oops, sorry. We added the verbal warning as the first step in progressive discipline. We added a shoe allowance of $100 per year, adjusted their tuition reimbursement language, tightened it up and mirrored it to the police and the dispatchers. And then for wages, we did a three-year contract with two and a quarter each year. And that mirrors what we've done for police, white collar, blue collar and dispatchers over the last couple of years.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Denise? None?
And we had no attorney fees.
Oh, hey. Even better.
Sweet.
That's a good thing. Okay, great. So, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Connecticut Healthcare Associates and National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, Home Care and School Healthcare Workers of Berlin, Unit 20, from AFSMI for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Agenda...
Easy, Denise. See?
Thank you.
No, but Denise can't leave.
No, she's not leaving, we know.
Agenda item number three is to adopt a resolution. There's a health plan that's funded by the police. And so, we've... I will let Denise explain.
Want to take it over?
Yeah, it's a complicated system.
So, in the year 2000, the police union, very smartly so, created a post-retiree health benefit plan where they fully funded it from employee contributions only. It's attached to the current defined contribution plan, which is the pension that has been stopped. And we only have about 13 members left in it. So, this post-retiree health is an extension of that. And it's a benefit that all officers are part of, whether they're in the pension or the defined contribution plan. And essentially, the way that it's worked for the last 18 years is that they've been required to put a percentage of top officer pay. It used to be 2%, then it was 3%, then it was 2%. Mandatory contributions into this pre-tax, post-retiree health fund. And then, when they did retire under age 65, they got a subsidy each month to help fund their health insurance. And this was set up because police officers typically retired before age 65 and it was a way to get them healthcare continuation subsidies. The town did not fund it. The town did not do anything except administer the fund. So, and the last time we were negotiating with police officers, they're looking at these funds. Because what's happened is, the only way to utilize the money in this fund, and it's a lot of money sitting in there, probably about $800,000. Right now, we have five officers who are benefiting from a $500 or $600 a month subsidy because they have to purchase the health insurance either through the town or directly through an insurance carrier in order to be eligible to get the benefit. Also, if you are... If you have health coverage through a spouse and you don't need to purchase retiree healthcare, you get no benefit at all. So, what the department had found was that the majority of the officers who contributed all these years throughout their lifetime here weren't actually receiving a benefit at the end of their career that they could utilize. So, after we finished negotiations last year, they formed a subcommittee to research other alternatives for that fund. They don't want to stop it, but they want to figure out what to do going forward to make it more beneficial for every employee. So, what we've got in front of you today is a plan with ICMA RC, who is our 401/457 plan provider. It's called an RHS Plan. It's a retiree health savings plan. And it works very similar to a 401. So, each officer will have their own account, their own investment options once that money goes in. And then, when they retire, it works like a flexible spending account. So, they would submit any kind of eligible medical expenses and they can get their money back out of that account. So, if they didn't need post-retiree healthcare, they could use it for dental, they could use it for glasses, they could use it for anything that you would use a flexible spending account for. If they did need to purchase post-retiree healthcare, they could use it to reimburse themselves for those premiums. Yep.
Will they pay tax on this?
No. So, it comes out of their paycheck pre-tax. As long as they use it for approved medical expenses, they do not pay taxes on that money.
Thank you.
Is it one of those, use it or lose it?
No. No. It works similar to a health savings account, if you're familiar with the HSAs. It's their money. It gathers like a 401. So, they can invest it like a 401. It starts to grow. And then, they can use it for their health insurance benefits in retirement. So, what it's done is it's given everybody some level of benefit. It's also given them an investment option that they didn't have previously because previously, the town took the money. And I'm going to say this, I might be wrong, but we held it in some kind of a mutual fund, some kind of very safe account. The officers were looking for more diversity in how they could invest that money because it is a long-term investment for most of them. So, they were able to get that along with different options for how they could use it in retirement.
It's all just their money.
It's all their money.
Their money.
But it is still mandatory through their union contract. They don't have a choice. So, they're required to invest it. So, this actually gives them much more option on how they can spend it. Yeah, right now, it's 2%.
That's it.
Yep.
And they can't put more?
Can't put more, can't put less.
Got to put the two in.
I believe you said the union endorsed this?
The union created it in 2000. And it's the union committee that is endorsing this new plan going forward.
Yeah, that's great. That's a great thing. Great. Okay. Any other questions? Concerns? Thanks, Denise. Take a motion?
Okay. Move to adopt the attached resolution to establish a retiree health savings program through ICMA Retirement Corporation to replace the existing police post-retirement medical account. The town manager shall be authorized to execute the plan and the trust and the Vantage Care Retirement Health Savings Adoption Agreement to the plan and any other related documents necessary to establish or administer the program, the plan or the trust, and any further amendments to the program, the adoption agreement, the plan and trust without further resolutions required to be adopted by the town council, provided such amendments pertain to which employees of the town are eligible to participate in the program. The plan and the trust or such amendments pertain to the mandatory contribution percentages or monetary amounts required to be made by employees or covered by the program, the plan and the trust.
Great. Second on that?
Read that.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, I'm reading it a couple more times.
Does someone help you, like, put those together?
I don't do the resolution. I don't do the motion. I just help.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Denise.
Okay. Agenda item number four. It is a limited deficit related to the Berlin Police Dispatch Project. Originally, the budget for that was $1.8 million to complete the project. The town council only approved... Well, you only approved $1.6 million for bonding. And we're trying to make sure we minimize the bonding. The project actually spent about $25,000 more than $1.6 million. Instead of bonding more money, Kevin has been going through the accounts and he has come up with a way of being able to change this. Kevin Delaney is here to talk.
Come on up. We don't want to deny you the opportunity, Kevin.
He was invisible. Hiding in the back row. He's here.
I know. You'd rather stay back there, but it's all right.
I mean, Jack pretty much summarized it as it is. It's... There is some money remaining from a previously completed project and would prefer to transfer that money and cover this overage rather than bond the additional $200,000.
That's great.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds good, everybody? Happy?
For less bonding.
Great. Less bonding. Take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the transfer of $25,823.06 from the McGee School Ru Fund to the Police Radios Fund to cover the costs that exceeded the original project estimate.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number five is the Police Department Server Replacement. The Police Department received funding to replace computer servers, switches and different equipment. They're looking to go forward and purchase that equipment based on some... On the state contract. Chris Susie is here to go over the details.
Great. Chris, how are you?
Good evening. How are you? We're just basically asking for permission to purchase the equipment through Winslow Technology Group. They're our authorized vendor through Dell. Brian Freeman, who runs IT for the Police Department, so he's here as well. So, if there's any technical questions, he can address them. But there's only two ways you can purchase this equipment. It's either through Dell Direct or through an authorized reseller. And Winslow's been working with us the past two years on, you know, when we're leading up to the budget and getting it approved in this year's budget. And Dell won't undercut an authorized reseller. So, you know, Brian found the best deal possible on state contract. He has a relationship with Winslow and we're just looking for permission to use them as our vendor.
Okay. Any questions? Chief? Hearing none? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the purchase of computer servers, switches, storage arrays, associated equipment and migration services necessary to run the Police Department's computer operating systems from Winslow Technology Group LLC using State of Massachusetts Contract Number ITC 47 VC 000612391 for an amount not to exceed $108,927.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Agenda item number six is also for Chris. We're requesting approval to enter into a non-emergency interaction... Excuse me. Inter-agency agreement between Town of Berlin, Southington and New Britton. This would be so that... I think it's a common contract, agreement between agencies so that they can support each other. Chris has the details.
So we have similar agreements with our mid-state task force, with our, you know, five surrounding towns, in Newington, Ramon, Rocky Hill. And Connecticut statute actually governs non-emergency agreements. It's statute 7-148 CC, but this will allow for us to have an agreement with New Britton and Southington. And it kind of came to, we saw there was a need for it, because we're all working together to address trespassing and swimming on the reservoir up at Ragged Mountain. And a lot of times, we'll stumble across, you know, crimes occurring in a different jurisdiction, and rather than, you know, detain the persons, call the proper jurisdiction, wait for them to get out in that terrain with ATVs and everything else, this will allow for the officers to take action, they'll have arrest powers, and they could deal with trespassing, swimming in the reservoir, things like that. They won't need to be cross-worn in each town.
Yeah, makes sense. Yeah.
When I saw this in the paper, I was surprised that we hadn't thought of this in the past. So I think this is a good idea. Probably saves some time, some energy, some money.
Absolutely.
I'm good.
Okay, great, we'll take a motion on this?
Okay. Move to approve the non-emergency interagency agreement between the Town of Berlin, the Town of Southington, and the City of New Britton, and authorize the town manager to sign this agreement.
Second.
Thank you very much.
I don't know where I come from.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is...
Hey, Jack, before you do this, I just, you know, Chris, you can tell us, but, you know, on item seven here, obviously, we had a, we had an accident. I know, it was Lieutenant Goslin, went out to the scene, I saw it, it was, you know, tragic, but thank God, neither the civilian or Lieutenant Goslin were seriously hurt, right? And he's still...
Correct, Jimmy missed a couple days of work, but he's back now. So we escaped narrowly there, just without the car, which will make that trade any day of the week, so.
Yeah, no, it was great, nobody, it's sad, because even, I think the gentleman that hit him was, I don't, there was no right real issue with him, I don't believe, at least I saw at the scene, I don't know, he just sort of drifted over.
It's a mystery, really, but he...
You're right, it is a mystery, right?
He was cited accordingly, and...
He didn't see the lights or anything, yeah. No, okay, whatever, you know, zoned out for a minute, but there was no, right, other issues with it, right?
Nope.
Yeah, it's just a really unfortunate accident, but thank God, everyone, and Lieutenant Goslin.
Hey, he's doing good.
Good, that's great.
We will, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, sorry, Jack.
That's okay, it's more important that, you know, our employees are safe.
Yes, indeed.
Number seven, though, is to replace the car that was, well, I'd say not damaged, but destroyed in the accident, it's totaled. Jim Simon is here to discuss how we're going about to replace that car.
Welcome, Jim.
Welcome back.
We're glad, we're glad to be back.
Well, as you stated, we lost a car on Berlin Turnpike. The car was rear-ended. The car happens to be a 2012 car. It was actually one of the cars that was won by the Police Department through traffic surveys, or traffic citations through the state. But being that it was a 2012, the damages to the car exceeded the 60%, so the car was totaled, subsequently totaled. So to replace the car, we have to replace it with, obviously, a 2018, and we replaced the car, we have to replace the equipment, because the equipment's not going to transfer over from a Taurus to the SUV, which is not available right now. And you have the total cost, just under $36,000 for the car, the equipment, and the changeover. Now, they will be reutilizing as much of the equipment as possible, such as a light bar, sirens, lights in the grills, lights around, modems, computers, things like that. So we salvage as much as we can, and replace the rest.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, take a motion on that?
Move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase one 2018 Ford SUV Interceptor from MHQ, utilizing Connecticut DAS Contract Number 12PSX 0194, for an amount not to exceed $28,391.55, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Second motion?
And to move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and purchase police-related equipment and installation of said equipment, utilizing Connecticut DAS Contract 16PSX 0033, for an amount not to exceed $6,843.81, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Okay, agenda item eight, excuse me, number eight, is also for Jim. It's a request to waive the bidding process for tires. They normally are looking to get Goodyear and Firestone tires off of a Connecticut DAS contract. They also get other tires, as they can price them at better prices. Jim is requesting a waiver, and he can give you the details.
So once again, it's time to purchase tires for the fleet. In the past, and you learn from your past, in the past, I have set it to, that we were going to purchase Goodyear tires from a couple different vendors. And that kind of bit me last year, when I had to purchase some fire truck tires, and they had to come from a different vendor. So to create, or to follow the town charter, and follow the purchasing requirements, when I went to the state contract, I just put in that these are the people that are accepted as the state contract for both Goodyear or Firestone tires. So we will be purchasing $28,000, which will be the total amount through the year, of tires, from those vendors. Most of those tires will probably be Goodyear tires, although we do purchase some off-brand tires, depending on the use of the vehicle. And we do utilize Connecticut Tire 90% of the time, which is a local vendor, on that list.
Okay, great.
Do we distinguish between summer and winter, or do we just purchase all season mostly?
We, actually, when, if you're speaking about the police cars, we take the summer car tires, and we reutilize those tires in the fleet, or back on the police cars during the summer.
Oh, good.
So they do get exchanged. The bigger trucks, they have construction tires in the back, and they would stay with that, construction-style tire.
Okay, great. Take a motion on this?
Okay, move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and purchase tires and related components, including off-brand tires, using the above State of Connecticut DAS Services Contract Number 12PSX 0109, for an amount not to exceed $28,000 in total for the fiscal year.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Nine.
Agenda item number nine is to upgrade the service agreement for the Town Hall Chiller, using a Sourcewell contract. Up to this point, the unit has been relatively new, it's time to upgrade, it's over six years old. Doug Soluk is here to discuss the upgrade in the service agreement, and the request for how to pay for it.
Come on up, Doug. While you're, you know, you're here, you might as well take a visit, right?
Welcome back, something came and went.
Yeah, it's gone.
Not on the temperature, just on the calendar.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's gone. So what do we got, so?
The chiller, going on year six now, it's been very good to us. This is basically just to enhance the insurance policy for the maintenance agreement. Some of the parts are past the five-year mark now. So we just, for a small investment, we can cover a lot more materials and labor, should something fail, that's not, no longer under factory warranty.
Okay.
How long does the chiller normally last? I don't have any idea.
The one we replaced was original from the building, and that was done in 2012, so...
Okay.
You know, we hope to get, with proper maintenance, 20-plus, 30-years out of it.
Okay, wow.
The issue with the chillers is, you can buy them, and a chiller will last you 20 or 30 years. What happens is the kilowatts per ton, the efficiency, you may buy it, and maybe a .6 rating, and over time, you'll see that it goes from .6 to .7, to .8, and you lose your efficiency. So at some point, that curve crosses, and you go ahead, and you decide it's time to buy a new chiller.
Right. And what's a new chiller cost?
Hundreds of thousands.
Okay, I was just curious.
Compared to your car engine, I mean, more miles you put on, just like the chiller, more hours it runs, it is a piece of mechanical equipment, it has pistons, and valves, and motors, and so it does break down in time, so, as Jack mentioned, it's more, you lose efficiency as time goes on, so. We do have the full service agreement, we do as much maintenance as possible to take care of it and preserve it.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Doug's here. Hearing none, we'll take a motion?
Move to utilize Sourcewell Contract Number 030817 CAR, and enter into a one-year contract with the Carrier Corporation for a full-service maintenance agreement for the Town Hall Chiller, in the amount of $12,628.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, Doug. It's agenda item number 10, is to purchase the new IT switches for the town and school buildings. This was approved as part of the budget for this year. They're looking to get approval to purchase the switches, using a Connecticut State DAS contract.
Yeah, this item was in our budget this year, shared between multiple departments, so all the IT departments worked on putting this together, through one of our vendors off a state contract. The Board of Ed provided their quantities to town, and what we share throughout the building, so there's a little bit of contingency, in case we need any cables, or connectors, or additional software support, but this should cover everything requested in the budget for the upgrades.
Great. Thanks.
No left over.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none, take a motion?
Move to utilize the State of Connecticut DAS Contract Number 13PSX 0280 MNVP 134, and purchase Newtown and Board of Education switches from PCMG, in amount not to exceed $140,873, which includes a 5% contingency.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11 is a request to approve $800 for a purchase order Number 190910, for earth contractors. What occurred here is, you had approved monies to do certain work on the tennis courts, for drinking water fountains and things like that, and make some modifications to the entrance gates. I'm going to get Doug off the hook on this one, because I'm the one that authorized it. I got a call from the contractor, when we built the tennis courts, we had the ADA entrance point on the far side of the courts, down toward the fields. As we built, as we built the new gates and put the drinking water fountains, if we extended the sidewalk, a matter of, you know, what was it, 50 feet, Doug? Not even that much. We could get a new ADA compliant entrance. I went out, made the decision that it was smart to do that at the time, so we're requesting $800 to cover that work.
Okay.
Okay.
Does this take care of the other problem of the steps?
Everything's gone, yep. I'm good.
That's great. Motion?
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to approve an increase of $800 in purchase order Number 190910, to earth contractors of Berlin, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $13,600, for the additional work related to the ADA improvements at the Berlin High School Tennis and Basketball Courts.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, agenda item number 12, is authorization for the town manager to accept the Community Connectivity Grant, and appropriation of the grant funds. Chris Edge is here to discuss the grant and use of the funds.
Thank you, Jack. This is actually a continuation of some of the work we had done previously. As you all had seen, we put new sidewalks in from Town Hall down to Main Street, along Kensington Road, as well as some on 4-Rod and, excuse me, Burnham. These monies we had gotten will help continue the effort we did, in order to go down 4-Rod Road, to continue to the middle school, as well as down to the high school. So essentially, it's just filling in some of the spots we had. It was a connectivity grant from Office of Policy and Management. We had gone through, we did the majority of the work. Our match on this is $70,000 from the road and bridge account, which essentially will be the engineering piece of it. So essentially, we're putting in 70, the state saving is $387,000, so again, we're being a much more walkable community.
Great. Okay, any questions?
How's the reception from people in the areas that get sidewalks? Good?
So far, they've been pretty good. I think initially, there was some concern about the shoveling, but I think they've realized, especially on 4-Rod, the safety piece has been big, because 4-Rod being a half-industrial, half-residential road, I think people are happy, long-term, because it really has helped take bikes and people off of the road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a motion?
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to accept the Community Connectivity Grant for sidewalks on Farmington Avenue, Mill Street, 4-Rod Road, Norton Road, and Robbins Road, to appropriate the $387,000 Community Connectivity Grant to the Community Connectivity Grant Account, and to appropriate $70,000 from the road and bridge account, as the local match, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Okay, agenda item number 13 is a request to authorize town manager into an agreement, an amendment of agreement with Beta Group for environmental consulting services, Connecticut Sand and Stone Facility. Chris is here to discuss that.
Yes, again, this is the property behind McDonald's, on New Britton Road. Connecticut Sand and Stone had it for many years, it had been very far in tax arrears. We actually just found out today, we've gotten another tax payment from them, so they've made it, I want to say, either eight or 10 months in a row. It's the first tax we've received in a while. Clean Earth is a company we're working with, it's actually going to be a public information session tomorrow night at the Baltic. So essentially, they're going to be talking to the residents and others about what they're looking to do. There's been different rumors around, their idea is to essentially help to make it flatland, so we can have some industrial sites long-term. So right now, essentially, working closely with them, we did the forbearance agreement previously through this body, which essentially said we would not foreclose. So far, it's been very good for all of us, we're still in contact, and more importantly, we're still getting checks for taxes.
That's great. Okay, any questions for Chris? Hearing no, and take a motion?
Okay, move to waive the town's bidding procedures, and authorize the town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Beta Group Inc., for a fee of $9,300, from the Brownfields Assessment Account, for additional environmental consulting services, related to 303 New Britton Road, 0 Route 9, 0 New Britton Road, Lot 11A, and 0 New Britton Road, Lot 2A, as this is in the best interest of the town, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda item number 15 is approval of purchase of a, I'm going to say it wrong, probably, Teagle Hybrid Storage Array and related expenses, based on the Capital Region Council of Government Request for Proposal. It would be purchased with Novus, the Novus Insight Company. This is something that would come off the Capital Region Government IT Services Cooperative Contract. Barbara Sagan is not here, she's on a cruise, so...
Nice.
If you want to talk to her, we'll have to call her, but she's on a cruise and enjoying herself.
Call her up, come on.
So anyway, it's something that was budgeted, it does help us with the expansion of our network storage system.
Okay, great. Any questions?
It was budgeted, it's just a transfer.
That's right.
Thanks, Jack.
Take a motion?
Okay, move to utilize the Capital Region Council of Government's IT Services Cooperative Contract, and award the purchase of a Teagle Intelalash T4100 Hybrid Flash Storage Array, and related expenses to Novus Insight in amount not to exceed $38,454.
Second on that?
Oh, thank you.
That's all right. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thanks.
All right, believe it or not, it's that time of year again. Agenda item number 16 is to award the contract for treated salt for this year, requesting to be able to obligate ourselves to 50% of the annual estimated quantity of the material. I will say to you that Cargill is not the lowest bid that we got, and I will also say to you that one of the best things I did prior to coming here was spending six years as being the highway superintendent, and you realize that not all salt is the same and not all contracts are the same. Cargill has done a very good job for the town of Berlin over the last several years, providing you with treated salt. It's done a very good job. It's also been very diplomatically, very reliable. There are vendors out there, and both Brian and I have experienced the same thing, where you can contract for slightly less, and you could be sitting here Saturday being promised 10 deliveries, and you'll get one. And then, you know, you have an ice storm, and it's very difficult to treat all your roads with one truckload of salt. Cargill's done a very good job. Our recommendation to you is to use Cargill again and continue that relationship.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Your motion on this?
Move to authorize the use of Cargill de-icing technology for related road salt utilizing the Capital Regional Council of Governments Contract Number 673 for snow and ice control through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I thank you for that one. Number 17, traffic guidelines. We.
Sorry about that.
Again, annually, it's the time of year that we normally update the street line. It's time to issue that award for a bid. Once again, this year, we're requesting that we award the contract to the contractor as part of the Capital Region Council of Government's CROG bid number 664. And then, we will contract out, and we'll have the street lines put in prior to the winter season.
Great. Take a motion on this?
Okay, move to award a bid and authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract to purchase street line painting services utilizing the CROG contract number 664 with the most cost-effective and qualified contractor.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Number 18 is the, was prepared by Kate. It's the South Middle Cemetery, also known as the Dunham Cemetery. We received a phone call from an individual who said that her uncle's estate had, we believed, left some money for the care or some work on that cemetery. Kate is, I'm gonna turn it over to Kate at this point because there's been several phone calls going back and forth, and there's clarification to make sure that the Dunham Cemetery is the same as the South Middle Cemetery. With that, I'm gonna let Kate give you all the details.
It's really self-explanatory.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them. But it was a phone call from a woman who feels very strongly that her uncle wanted to do this. Her uncle never married. He set up all these different accounts for the different things that he embraced and everything. Initially, Pam's mother was the administrator or secretar, secretress, and she decided not to do anything, and unfortunately, has passed. So her daughter is taking on the bulk of trying to figure out the intent of what her uncle wanted on all these different, there's like 30 or 40 accounts that he had. And it's been a pleasure to talk to her, she's a very nice lady, but she thinks that this would be a great benefit because her uncle was at Dunham, and that that's why they want to continue doing some kind of maintenance with the Dunham, you know, all the cemeteries, or at least at Dunham Cemetery. There's been articles in the papers, there's been videos on TV about the fact that we're not taking care of our cemeteries, this is statewide. This is a nice, hopefully, if we get the money, a nice little benefit that then the cemetery committee can look at and maybe restore some stones or do some kind of major maintenance out at that cemetery, a little bit beyond what we normally would do as basic maintenance.
I think, as you remember, during the budget season, we asked you for $5,000 to put it into cemetery account. Previously, the town was not budgeting, so the cemetery committee wasn't meeting because they didn't have any money to do anything. The town did put $5,000 to budget this year, which, it sounds like a little, but it gets them started. We've also, Jim Mahoney and Chris Edge have been working on a $2,000 grant that you can get for cemeteries, so we're applying for that, and we're probably gonna get the $2,000 that allows us to do a little bit more on some of the cemeteries. And in this case, you know, Kate and I have talked about it, if we were able to get the money, $11,000, we would gladly accept it, and we would put it into an account specifically for that cemetery, so it would be earmarked. But this is allowing us to have the cemetery committee to be able to take care of some of the stones and fences and things like that that need to be attended to.
That's an old cemetery.
Yeah.
Is that a one-shot deal, $11,000?
Well, the thing is, there might be more than $11,000 because it has, the last statement we have is from 2007. We don't know the amount of interest that has accumulated, you know, good or bad. So, but it would be a one-shot deal.
Thanks.
You're right.
Hope we had it in the market. It's very nice that people do that, you know, because those cemetery, now we just, they're neglected, and this is great that we would, you know, hopefully, if it works out, gentlemen, you know.
It's a very, I don't think anybody ever would think to do it, but it's a great, especially when your family's there, and it's an investment in your remembrance.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, take a motion?
Okay, move to authorize Jack Healy as town manager to sign on behalf of the town of Berlin, Connecticut, the required form to be submitted to the Office of Unclaimed Funds, 110 State Street, Albany, New York, 12236, for property located in the South Middle Cemetery account.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Aye. No, I don't have any, sorry. I jumped the gun.
I'm trying to go as fast as I can, Brendan. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, agenda item number nine.
Cheer up, Jack.
I've been trying.
Gotta go.
Agenda item 19 is an 8-24 review for the federal local bridge project that we've been discussing for the four bridges. We're requesting that you refer the matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review, and upon their review and approval, we come back to you.
Okay, motion?
Okay, move to refer the matter of rehabilitating the Worthington Ridge, Worthington Bridge, Berlin Street Bridge, Wildermere Road Bridge, and the Heritage Drive Bridge to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 review, as per the Connecticut general statutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Number 20 is an 8-24 review for the Kensington Dam. This is, again, being referred to Planning and Zoning. Upon their review and comment, it would come back to you.
Great. Second on this? Or motion, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun now.
Move to refer the matter of repairing the Kensington Dam, deep dam number 00703, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 review, as per the Connecticut general statutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Thanks. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 21 is to authorize the town manager to sign an application for receipt of a free drug unit that the police department is putting together an application for. I think it's something that you, the council have talked about several times. Chris Soucy is here to give you any particulars.
Chief, just come out for one second. Thank you for getting this done. I mean, it's something that we had talked about, and we had some drug forums, I know, about a year ago, and I know a lot of towns did this and do this, and I think it's great to have, I know we do the collections twice a year, but it's great if they have, you know, time to, you know, because people don't get to those, and we don't want to leave some of those substances hanging around in people's medicine cabinets. We know what happens with that, it's not a good thing, so that's great.
Yeah, we have a number of strategies we're trying to employ, this is one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Our twice-a-year collections are very successful, next one's October 27th, so.
Okay, yeah, coming up, right, yeah. And this will, so this will be there all the time?
It'll be in the lobby, you know, we're suited for this type of thing, it's monitored, we have the personnel to dispose of the collected items and.
Just take it out with your drug evidence, I guess.
It's just one other strategy, you know, we're trying to employ for the, combat the opioid.
Yeah, I know, it's a very difficult problem, very difficult.
This will be inside the building, so you don't have to worry about.
In our lobby, yup, we have cameras on it, and it's for prescription drugs.
I had visions of people, like when they steal the ATMs, trying to steal this, but if it's in the building, I mean, it's great.
I mean, we can bolt it down, I don't know, I don't think that's necessary.
Hopefully, in the lobby, you got it on camera, and no one's gonna walk in and walk out with it, but you never know today.
Correct.
But that's great, that's the issue. Great, thanks. Any other questions? I have a motion?
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to sign the application for and receipt of a drug-free unit to be provided by CVS, to be installed in the vestibule of the Berlin Police Department.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Okay, whew, okay, with the town manager's report next.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have several things, but I'll try to go through them quickly.
That's okay, we gotta hear it.
Number one, and this is high on my list, we have hired a new Public Works Director. So hopefully, it's better than the last one. Anyway. So, his name is Michael Ahern, he'll be starting on September 17th. He seemed very enthusiastic. Thanks to both Brendan and Peter for sitting on the committee and helping us with that selection. We had a five-person team who did the interviewing, and he, Michael was basically the consensus. Four of us were enthused, one was less enthused, but still said he would agree to it, and so we've agreed, and so Michael will be starting on the 17th.
Is he from town, Jack?
Excuse me?
Is he from town?
No. Michael's from Danbury, he is currently the Assistant Public Works Director in Wilton. He's got a long background, he's been an environmental engineer, he has a master's degree from Manhattan College, and is obviously a Connecticut professional engineer, as is required. The Kensington Dam just is out for public notice right now with the Connecticut DEEP. Once we get that back, we'll go out for, we'll go out for bid, and we'll proceed once we get the bids back, as long as it's within our scope of money. There's some, we've had some conversation back and forth, I'm more of the opinion we may want to wait until next spring and summer to do the project. I think we're trying, we may try to push too hard to get it done this fall, you're relying on the weather, plus, you know, we need to talk with the residents, make sure that we don't do anything to interfere the use of the dam. But we are, we are going out to bid, the plans are done, we are still working on some grants to see if we can get some help with the funding on that, on that project. The Burnham Street Bridge, just, I think in the past, you've heard that we've delayed several projects, so just as an update, the Burnham Street Bridge, we did find out that the funding is available from DOT. We were lucky, the contractor held his price. We originally bid this, and we were waiting, the contractor has agreed to hold their price. We are working with them to start that project in the spring. I don't like doing bridge projects through the winter, so, and that will be a bad detour, so we want to make it as short a time as we possibly can. The High Road Bridge is coming along. My opinion is it's a little bit behind, but it looks like it'll still be done by late October, so that detour will be eliminated. It's coming along well, to this point, we do not have any outstanding change orders, nothing unusual, so it's been going along. The summer weather's put them back a little bit with the rain, August did hinder us somewhat there. As a note, I just want to notify you or let you know that the Berlin Fire Department sent me a letter today, requesting support of the town with equipment and manpower to clean up after the Berlin Fair. It's something the town has done every year, we send a sweeper down and staff. Kate and I went back and forth whether or not you needed to prove that, we've done it in the past. I think it's just a matter, we'll let you know that we're gonna go ahead and provide a sweeper and some staff just to help clean up the fairgrounds after the fair. It's something the town's done, as far as I know, all along. The vestibule project, I've had a lot of calls on that. It is behind, but I think if you knew, I was concerned when we started this project, we were trying to push it into the schedule. The reason it's behind is, we went out to bid, everything got delayed a little bit, but that, the reason it's behind is, by the time we signed the contractor, the, our contractor who subcontract the actual construction of the storefronts, got in line with everybody else who's doing this right now, and they keep telling us, we're waiting for shop drawings. Without shop drawings, we can't, we can't do the work, so we're waiting for shop drawings, and every two weeks, Doug gets a note from the contractor saying there are two weeks more. And I talked to Doug today, and he said, we are now next in line, so we should get our shop drawings in two weeks. The project has moved along, I mean, the window film is on there, we're doing a punch list on that, caulking and things like that, so that work has been done. As far as the schedule, the next part of it, I think, once we place the order for the storefronts, I think it has to be a discussion, the Board of Ed and superintendent have to decide, do you want to interrupt your school's, school season, or do you want to wait till spring and just do it?
That's what I was wondering.
We talked about that.
It sounds like it would be pretty intrusive, but.
I think it would.
Yeah.
But I think that's a decision they need to let us know, but that is the reason, so if there's, if anybody questions you why, that is the reason why, you know. It's just a matter, we are in line with other people who are, and those storefronts have to be built. You can't build a storefront and bring it in, you have to measure and make sure that it meets all of the, you know, all of your particular dimensions. So that's, doing the project properly, but it is delayed. So, if you have any questions, Doug did provide me with a whole schedule of going back to when we originally signed the contract, back in January, if anybody's interested in seeing it.
Hey, Jack, while you're in school security, just, so, and I just, this would be maybe, it's just, I guess we don't make the decision, the Board of Finance does, but so, in some discussions with the superintendent over some funding that was left over during this past year, over and above the $400,000 that they have returned based upon the state funding cut, I think there's a, you know, small amount, I think it's like $43,000 or somewhere around that, that, you know, he was asking, he had asked me, just because we were talking about school security, about using that, keeping those funds for additional security, that we know there's some more things we want to do beside the vestibule project, we probably want to add some different things, which probably, you know, just other things we want to add, but one of the things is school security director, which would be hired and would be the coordinator, but would also be, would be retired law enforcement stationed in one of the elementary schools to add, supplement the two school resource officers, so he wanted to know, and again, it's not, apparently, it's not our decision, it's the Board of Finance's decision, so, but just poll you guys, just so we can send them, we're all in favor of it. If we are, that the $43,000 would remain in his budget, and my understanding, what Mr. Bendini said to me, would go towards that first-year salary, of which he'll make up the rest. I think it just went out for advertisement, if I'm not mistaken.
I understand, it just went out for advertisement.
Okay.
I haven't seen the advertisement, my understanding it was it was going out for advertisement, and it was approximately $43,000.
Is that, Kevin, is that about the right amount that I'm talking about? If we know?
Unaudited, but yes.
Yes, okay, okay, so, I mean, it just, you know, I don't want people to think it's a million dollars, or $10, or, you know, it's $43,000, I guess, or around that amount.
So this isn't for a project, it's for an individual who would be a director slash SRO?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Not an SRO, it's.
Oh, just school, school security.
It's gonna be, not an SRO, it'll be.
Okay.
The way that it's described to me by Brian is that the manager will be at one of the schools, it will do a dual purpose. That person will be at a school and be the manager, so you'll have three, you know, you'll have one at McGee, one at Hubbard, one at Willard.
Okay.
One at each of the schools, but one of them will be the manager.
Yeah, the plan is to keep the two police officers, you know, school resource officers at the high school and at McGee.
McGee.
And this gentleman or lady, whoever we hire, would be at one of the elementary schools, but also be the supervisor, and then the plan going forward would be to hire two more to cover all the, you know, so all the elementary schools would be covered by, they wouldn't be, you know, Berlin Police Officers, they'd be school security officers, and that's to be discussed a little bit later, but we're starting, obviously, with this person that would be able to, you know, work at the other two, so, yeah.
I have a few questions. So who is this person going to be employed by? Is it gonna be a Board of Ed slash superintendent employee? Or it will be? It's not? Okay. My, my other question is, will this person be armed or unarmed?
At this time, my understanding is this person's going to be unarmed.
Yeah, I think that's another, that's another discussion we probably need to have with the community of...
I have serious reservations.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're, you know, I think everyone's, can go in different directions. I, I think, I mean, I'll speak for, well, I won't speak for the superintendent, but he has his thoughts about it too, and so we probably, you know, but at least, and he, he agreed in our informal discussion, just that they would be, these three people would be, when, when they're all hired, would be retired law enforcement. So if and when, or whatever decision the Board of Ed makes and the town makes to arm them, if that happens, at least they would be trained by, by their past experience.
So I was under the impression before we convened for our summer vacation, if you will, that we were going to have a little bit more involvement as a town council in the process. I, I thought I was going to be a little bit more involved to at least express some of my ideas and wish list. Is that still on the table? Is that still going to happen?
Yeah, I, yes. Yeah, I think what we'll do now, you know, the vestibule thing was going, and then, and then we had some other, we had one informal meeting just to get some information from the Newington School Security Chief, so now I think would be the time for several of us and others, whatever, whoever the superintendent wishes to take it a little bit further. I mean, you know, past the vestibules we know are there, and there's some other things we can do, and that, I think some things have been done by the Board of Ed to supplement security, but there's some more we can do.
Yeah.
And that's including these people. So now would be the time, probably, to see what else.
I, I feel pretty strongly about armed security. If, if there were a situation that you needed an armed security response, you're, you have it there. I feel that's the purpose of it. I know North Haven, they just hired school resource officers, armed, and they're just supernumerary powers, they're there just for that. And they also augment patrol during special events, like the Berlin Fair or something, so it could assist the police department in traffic control, highway construction, the Berlin Fair, what have you. So that, that's just my two cents. I, I would like a security guard who was armed, in case, God forbid, hopefully we never need it. It's better to have someone armed than unarmed. Especially someone who's trained and, you know, capable, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough discussion, I guess. North Haven's done it through the police department, right? I believe.
Town ordinance, police department, retired officers.
Yeah, and, and Burlington?
Burlington, I talked to their head of facilities there, and by the end of next week, they will have armed security guards at each of their schools. The, the, the school is purchasing the, the weapons. They, each of the people are being hired are retired police officers. That's a criteria.
So we'll, Alex, we will, now that I talked to Mr. Benigni, and we'll, we're going to convene something just to kind of go forward now. Really, not, not too much happened.
And Mark, it's being funded out of the Board of Ed, or out of Department 61?
I know we had some great discussions.
The discussions at this point is the, the money is in the Board of Ed's, that's their, you know, what they would be...
For, yeah, come on up, Kevin. I, I know there was just some questions on the, that, that money's with them now already, so, right.
Well, it actually, when the year ends...
Comes back.
It actually would come back to the fund balance. By statute, if a community has a Board of Finance, then the Board of Finance has absolute authority, and it is only the Board of Finance would work with the Board of Ed. One thing I will say, since I'm at the microphone, typically, these are viewed as one-time events, one-time sources of cash. There's no assurances that next year that money will stay. In fact, the surplus money was principally driven by, you know, assistant superintendent vacancy and a number of other vacancies that are not sustainable. So typically, this type of surplus money would be used for one-time events, not to increase ongoing operating costs, which personnel would be viewed that way. Normally, when this happens and the Board of Finance of, of communities work with the Board of Ed, it's put into what's termed a non-lapsing account. It's basically a separate account away from operations of either the town or the Board of Ed, and it sits in this account, and it is the discretion of both the council and the Board of Finance to then appropriate the funds as it comes forward.
Okay. So is that, so should we do it that way? I mean, I, you know, if, if people...
That's how you'd have to do it, by statute, is the Board of Finance would establish the relationship.
Yeah.
And, and you can establish the parameters. There are formal agreements, and there are informal agreements.
What do we need, so what would we need to do next then, about that?
Well, the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed will have to actually request...
Ask that.
Money in the Board of Finance will have to deal with it. I believe, you know, corporation councils are something different.
Is that...
Right, some towns are doing it as an MOU between the Board of Ed and the police department.
Okay. For the money, but, but I mean, this, I mean, this extra...
The Finance has to...
Okay, so this extra money, though, this, will be the Board of Finance will determine...
Correct.
To do with it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, and, and that's fine. So, but I just was wondering if we had a consensus that, you know, Mr. Benigni was asking me, and I said I deferred, and I said it's not really our decision, but at least, you know, you guys know about it, and, you know, if you guys agree, that's great. If we don't, you don't. It doesn't matter what we say. But I would be in favor of letting him use that, and it might not be for the officer, it could be for some additional security measures too, that they... There are other things that we'll talk about, Alex, you know, we'll get, we'll have a committee, and there's some other things that we'll talk about, probably not in a public meeting, just so we don't, you know, we don't want everything out there what we do, that's never a good thing, but some things will, we can discuss in public too, so, but yeah, so, but that's just out there. And could just pass along to Mr. Benigni that he's got to go to the Board of Finance, and hopefully they see it our way, or me, it should be done. Thanks. Yep. Sorry.
Bill cells are under design. Bernie, we got the, we took the email. I called it, you, Doug, and...
Mm-hmm.
I asked them, I said, you know, you have requested a review. So they will visit that, the London, London op, just to make sure that then it's not... I asked them to go take a look at that. Police Station study itself, STV is working on that, and so they were, they're doing their, their, their information together, and they are working towards the other report on Police Station use of towns there. Commerce Street, several emails, I think some of you are on those regarding the noise issues. PNZ has issued, I mean, you, you, you passed the ordinance, PNZ has issued them a letter. Attorney Capola has been working with our PNZ department to work with them as far as enforcement. Elton Road, I asked the, I sent the, I think I sent everybody in this town hall out there to do inspection of that property. Again, the health department, fire department, the fire, went out there, also the building official. I asked everybody to go out, I asked the animal control officer, because we're getting concerns from the neighbors that there are vermin and other animals going in the house, I also asked the animal control officer to go out there with them. I asked the police to go out also to inspect the building. They came back with some photographs, we need to address a few things. I'm working with Attorney Capola, we have finished up the, I want to get the right name of this, because I have the name of what we're doing. We're putting together a letter to, to the, to the homeowner about the property, it's with the assessment and remedy, so that is complete, and will be being issued to the, to the property owner. I'm also working with Attorney Capola, and we're having to work slowly, because I'd like to just go in and clean it and, and, and clean the site. She's cautioned me, and I think she's, she needs to do this, that if I, if I go too fast, it could set a precedent, and then we could end up having to take other properties and things like that. So we're working on a way of repairing this, such that, and she's given me some information about a way that we can go in, at least clean up some of the vegetation and things, and it, it looks a little better, and, and we just have concern about any, any animals in the area. So we're working on that right now.
I mean, I appreciate you doing that. These poor neighbors, I, I don't, I mean, I can't believe we're still actually talking about a remedy. And, you know, listen, I get how this process is, but we're talking, these people have dealt with that house for what? I don't know, eight years, nine years, when they came to me three years ago, and we still, nothing's done. I mean, I know you went out and inspected it, but you're going to...
No, we're listening to you. There's an assessment. The issue with assessing fines and things is that it continues on, you can put liens on a property, and they don't react.
Right. But at some point, I think, right, we've had no response from this homeowner, correct?
No, there's not a response.
None.
But...
I know we've got to follow the process, I get it, but...
Well, it's not so much a process, Mark, because I think that we have to be careful and, I mean, you know, the, the, in here. I'd like to go out and just...
I know.
Pick the property up and clean it.
Right.
There's a cost associated with that.
Right.
More so, I was, I think, from my mind, I was willing to take on a cost and then be able to put it back as a lien. There's setting the precedent that, okay, so, yeah, this is a house, but let's say you have an industrial property that becomes lighted. Now, you, so you set the precedent, you're, at some point, you're going to take the property. So you take the property, and now you end up with a super fund site, a million dollar remit.
Too many of those.
Well, I mean, you know, listen, we all know the process, but, you know, I mean, wouldn't it all be on a case-by-case basis on what we do and don't do? I mean, there may be a precedent setting in this issue, but we're, you know, we're talking, from what I remember, talking to the neighbors, we're talking, this probably, we're probably at nine years that this place has looked this bad. And nine years, to me, as a citizen, not as the mayor, not any, just the citizen in Berlin, how unresponsive is our government? I mean, that's terrible. That's just a local issue, and it's on the federal, state, and local, it's not, I'm pointing fingers at anybody, it's just how unresponsive is a citizen? And I called the town nine years ago, and it's still not done. I mean, that's incredible. And, and we, and not, we put a ton of effort on this, we all have, since, you know, it came to light, but, I mean, geez, you know, come on. My God, it's terrible.
The fundamental, the fundamental problem is it's private property.
No, I understand that.
It's not town-owned property.
Right, right.
And when you talk about going on to somebody's property and doing things to the property, even to make it safe...
Right.
You know, there's certain due process rights, and you have to be careful that it's not viewed as a taking.
Right.
I mean, there's...
I, I would think we, though, we would be able to craft this ordinance, which we did, but I know we might need some changes to it, maybe, but to where it would allow at least the cleanup, you know, I mean, not, maybe not, you know, we don't want to disturb anybody's property, we all, that's all near and dear to our hearts in the United States of America here, but, you know, that...
Have we ever filed a legal action, an injunction, or...
Well, I mean, that's, that's the next step, right? I mean, that's...
Why is it taking so long, though? Why aren't we just making the jump? I don't understand.
Do what? I'm with you. Very frustrating.
That's, I mean, to file an injunction action is nothing.
You know, an injunction to clean up a property gets you nothing.
Well...
Gets you nothing different than you have already.
Well, but if you're fining them, and then...
They are being fined.
And are they paying it?
No.
So then why aren't we just, then, we're closing on it?
We're preparing the injunction, and that's the next thing, the next step that I just talked to Attorney Capola last week about doing, because, yeah, my perspective, I would like, you know, yes, as the manager, and I think getting the calls from the resident, I would like to do that. But again, as I talked to our attorney, she's, she's leading me through the process to make sure that we don't overstep something, and that we don't, we don't do something that's out of our, out of our, our authority to do. And that's why I do some people out. We have secured the buildings a number of times. The photographs are, there's, there's a lot of debris, there's a boat, there's a car, there's...
I mean, I'm just asking, because I work for, for council in East Hartford, and it seems to be a pretty successful procedure over there, so that's, that's my, that's why I was inquiring.
And since, you know, the last year, one of the things that we did as a town, is we felt, when, when she came to see us, I had a streetlight without the property, so it was kind of, you know, it's not, at least it's something, the, 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 thank you, I mean, the town did that.
Does anybody live there?
No.
No, I, I mean...
Do the neighbors have a cause of action for nuisance or something? Arguably? Yeah, arguably. Again, what's it get them?
Yeah, and that guy's...
What's the end game? Town want to foreclose the property?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, you got, you've got, which is a public health nuisance now, or more, worse than a nuisance, public health issue at a minimum, and safety issue. At some point, how long do we wait till this person, homeowner responds? I mean, I, we've, we've all, and, you know, I'm not, you guys have all taken the right steps, we've moved it forward immensely.
What would we do as a town if we took it over? Like, we would have the expense of it?
For sale.
Oh, sell it. I mean, it's a building lot, I mean, knock the...
Got to clean it up.
Clean it up, but again, you know, I, I mean, it's just, it's very frustrating to, if I was them, and, and they are frustrated, but they, well, you know, they're appreciative, the last time I spoke to them was probably six months ago, they have seen much progress. So Jack and Jeff and Jennifer, I thank the whole town, you know, government, that they've done, they've moved it forward a lot, but it's still there. I mean, I can't believe it's taken this long, and we focused on this. I mean, we've been focusing, and we've changed ordinances, we've done everything humanly possible to get this forward, and, you know, our town employees have worked hard on it, but we still seem like, I know we're at the next step, hopefully, the injunction, but yeah, I mean, at some point, we got to foreclose, and if it's unsafe, knock it down and sell it. I mean, it's a beautiful area, you know, so I just, it's just very, very, very frustrating to sit here as a, as a citizen in Berlin, knowing that if I called my town up nine years later, oh wow, maybe something will, right? I mean, it's difficult, you know, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm just very frustrated for these people, you know, so anyway, I know you guys are doing great, it's nothing. Got to blow off some steam somewhere, might as well be here, but...
I do call them about once every two weeks.
Do you? And I appreciate that. I know, you know, and I know they're very appreciative of what we've been doing, but...
Well, the other issue is, you know, you say nine years...
Nothing was, right.
Nothing had happened.
I know, I understand.
Or eight years.
No, I know, well, yeah.
There had been no issue, there had been...
No, I know, I know.
No proof that a notice of violation or a citation or anything had been sent to the property owner.
Yes, I know.
So we started from scratch.
That's true. No, you're right, you're right, but...
And, you know, we do this in lots of towns.
Right.
It's the same issue.
I know.
You know, we write blight ordinances.
Right.
And, you know, we collect tens of thousands of dollars of fines...
Right.
When a property sells, or a property refis, or somebody dies, or somebody finally has the financing to clean the property up. Every once in a while, you have a piece of property that, for lack of a better word, is abandoned.
Right.
And it's very difficult. You can go to court. You can get a judgment.
Yeah.
What does that get you? A lien. You can go to court, you can get an injunction. What does that get you? It's an affirmative injunction, saying, "Clean up your property, stop violating the blight law." What does that get you? It gets you nothing more than what you already have.
Yeah.
So you exhaust your remedies, but at some point, the town's going to have to make a decision. Okay, you have a non-responsive property owner who's abandoned the property. What do you want to do?
So after the injunction, let's say...
Find a buyer for the property and foreclose and sell your, sell your liens to a third party?
Something. We got to do something.
Those are all options that you can consider.
Yeah. I mean, are we...
I wouldn't advise the town to take title to this piece of property.
Right.
But again, I wouldn't advise the town to take title to 889 Farmington Ave either, so...
True. But, but I mean, at some point, so, all right, so let's say we don't do any of these options that just will never be resolved? I mean, I, that's just completely...
I'm not, I'm not saying that there's not something to be done.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, you have to, you know, if, if you've reached a point where you feel like all the legal remedies are taking too much time...
Right.[1561.65]
-then you have to consider whether the town wants to foreclose on the property.
Yeah, what do you think about that?
If you wanna do that, you get a phase one done, so you at least know what you're dealing with, I mean, it's one thing to say the property's blighted-
Right.
-whether or not the neglect and the recklessness that's demonstrated to the naked eye-
Right.
-has resulted in some contamination, or some environmental condition that would expose the town to liability-
Right.
-I don't know that.
No, we don't know that.
You know, and before you would make a decision on whether you wanna foreclose, you'd go to an L E P and get a phase one done at least.
Okay.
If that's something you want us to explore, we'll do that.
Yes.
Talk to Jennifer about-
Yes, I think, I don't know, what do you guys-
Some of these other issues.
I mean, you gotta do something.
Yeah, right?
I think it's ridiculous to just stagnate on this, let this property owner get away with what they're getting away with.
In the meantime, let's continue to find them, so if there's a transfer-
No, continue down the process, yeah.
It's a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, oh yeah, keep it going.
But, but I would, yeah, we, we've gotta look at the foreclosure.
And attorney fees and everything like that, all that?
Um, yeah, I mean, this is crazy, we gotta do something. Um, yeah, if we could do that, Jack and Jeff, just go down that other road too, well, I know we're pursuing what we're doing, that's great, continue on that road, I, I'm sorry, but I just, it's just, I feel so-
I understand the frustration, because-
Oh, I'm so frustrated for those people, they're so nice.
I would, I would like to send the town crew out there, mow the lawn, you know, just-
No, I know, we, I know, we all, I know what we all wanna do, but, you know, we're, we'll do it within the law, and within the letter of the law, but, the law does move very slowly, many, many, many times, as we all know that, so anyway, thank you guys for that discussion.
Depends on which end of it you are.
Well, that's, 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 that's very true, that is very true.
Okay.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's our time here, but it's not a waste for these poor people.
See what happens, would you not hear for a month?
Yeah, well, you know, we get fired up, I guess, you know?
Uh, number 11, this'll fire you up, number 11 is Water Control Commission, just so that you know, when I got here, they, we, we started reviewing the finances, they need, they're, they're in need of a fee increase, so, we've been having studies done for, for about the last year, about rate, rates, what they should be charging for rates, and so the Water Control Commission right now is reviewing the possibility of having a 35% increase for water, and a 9% increase for sewer, now, they haven't had a rate increase in one of those.
What? Say that again?
35% for water and 9% for sewer, they have not had a rate increase since before I got, several years before I, I got here, the water, we are concerned about the funding on the water, Kevin is here also, he can, I'm gonna throw Kevin, he's talked, throw Kevin under the bus here.
Kevin, you should've left when you had a chance, buddy.
His former friend, Kevin.
Like, who hasn't been doing the rate increases? Us as a town?
The Water Control Commission, it's had the rate, when, when, when I, when I first got here, there was, thought that they had plenty of money, as we're going through, we started doing annual reviews and things, we found that the, the water, the water system in Berlin, the water, is, is, is about 60 to 70% depreciated, they need to reinvest in their, in their system, so it's time, you know, they've been looking at it, and doing a rate study, so they're looking at increasing, you know, the fees, it's been, and I don't have the exact number, but it's been several years since they've had any rate increase, most towns increase their, their rates five to 10, 5% a year.
Right, and I guess that's what I'm saying, I, I don't think it's fair to go up 35% because we have neglected to review this as a overseeing body, and to go up on people 35% to, to get us to where we're supposed to be, like, I think you should, maybe wanna look into a stepwise something, as opposed to hitting them with 35% right off the rip, and we might have to take that as a shame on us, but, I don't think 35% is fair.
I'm smiling, because we've had some very lively debates on this, some of us are in the camp that we wanted to get, go for a lower, and there were those who actually wanted to go higher, 35%, and it's been going back and forth, it, it's not, at this point, it has not been approved, they're studying it, they're probably gonna have another meeting, probably September, to talk about it, but, to be, to be honest, the, the water and sewer systems are, are, are depreciating, they need to be refunded in a way, now, the interesting part, because Berlin has three different water districts, they, they fund them different ways, you know, the Berlin water, the Berlin water, which is under the town, funds it the way most towns do, is what you charge for water and sewer as, as a rate, you pay, you just send it to your, your customers, the Kensington and Worthington, they actually apply as part of a tax, so, it's an interesting way, you know, and there's debate back, back and forth about who pays more, who pays less, within the water community, most towns, or most agencies do it like the Water Control Commission does, and they charge you per, per, per unit of water, and things like that.
Right.
So.
Do, do we think the people in the other two districts pay less with the tax, or do they, I mean, you can-
Well, it's been our opinion, they pay more.
They pay more in the two other districts? That's a whole nother issue, too, that probably going forward, 'cause I know we've had discussions about the-
Our district.
-condition of water systems in those two districts, right, and so, I, I just, maybe that's something for future discussion.
Ray Gerama actually has done a considerable amount of work looking into the three districts, and, and the funding, and, and thoughts about whether, you know, about consolidation of the uni, of, of the, of the system, it's a very unusual situation you have in Berlin, with three small water districts, you know, it's, it's uncommon, plus, it's also very hard to sustain.
Right.
I have concerns that, you know, because of the way it's set up, you don't get, for lack of better term, proper flow through the water systems, because you have valves, and you get deadheading, and things like that, I think there's probably a better way of putting together a system, by having one uni, universal water, water control in, in Berlin, water and sewer.
So, can't, I mean, huh, I mean, that's, you know, I guess, what, when were they created? 1929?
Yeah, and it was one, there was a fourth one at the time, East Berlin, which eventually became part of the Berlin Water Control Commission, and, and that part of the system is actually, you know, I think if you were here, Ray brought you in a pipe that you saw was almost full, that was from their system, it's just that, you know, the systems need to be maintained and updated, and it's been a long time since, there's been a lot of capital investment.
Meeting on the schedule.
We have, we have people climbing down into sewer pits, right, you know, pump stations that are 40 feet deep, and I had some serious health concerns, so I actually forced them to put new fans and, and systems in place, just to prep for that, but, these, these are antiquated systems, and they, we really need to update these systems.
So perhaps Berlin, I know we hate change in Berlin, but maybe 1929, fire districts need to be changed in 2000, 18, or moving forward, I know we gotta, I think we gotta go to the state for that too, if I'm not mistaken, but, so, can we, Jack, and maybe in the coming few-
We can look at it.
-councils, have maybe Ray come and explain it, and maybe we can take some steps, I, I, I don't know if there will be many unhappy people in the two districts, or, or happy people, but if the system's not maintained, we're all gonna have a problem, right, if they feed into each other, I would imagine.
I think the larger systems, they're actually going through consolidation now.
Yeah, okay.
Lot of them are doing cost of service studies, too.
Yeah, all right, well, maybe we're gonna put that on the agenda, anyway, thank you, sorry, we way off topic here, but-
Okay.
Important stuff, thank you.
On a better note, Spruce Brook Road Bridge, the funding has been approved by the state D O T, and so we're pro, we're gonna finish up the, the design, and we had to just get a couple final approvals from regulatory, one of them's from the Army Corps of Engineers. The Belcher Brook Interceptor, speaking of sewer, the project's going very well, we have not run into any hiccups there, working on the funding at, at this point, but that's going through, and, I think as all of you may have noticed, we are doing our paving projects in Kensington and Four-Rod Road right now, so, waited for the Labor Day holiday to do that, so, it's just, I'll be quite frank, it's just a matter of timing, we're working with telecon, we're somewhat at their, their, their mercy to, to do these, so.
Oh, yeah.
So how far down Kensington are you going?
We're only coming as far as, right to, to the front of town hall, we're stopping there.
Two, but it's gotta be done, what are you gonna do?
What we're trying to do is pick-
Avoiding the whole thing, so I didn't know, like, how far you went down.
That's as far as we're going.
Oh, that's funny.
What we're trying to do is, if you look, the, the rest of Kensington's in better condition, we are trying to target the roads that are, are, are in poorer condition than the town, I've got the, a chance to go out and meet with several residents in the last couple weeks, they wanna show me their roads and things, so, anyway, it's, it's a good thing.
When it's finished, it'll be great, yeah, it's great, it's all good, well, thank you, Jack, for letting me and other people maybe vent a little bit, not certainly directed at you or Jeff, it's just, you know, stuff's gotta get fixed, and appreciate all the work you're doing.
99% of the time, people respond.
Yeah, yeah.
My experience doing-
This is an odd one, right? It's an oddity.
People respond, you don't have to sue 'em, they respond, and if you do sue 'em, boy, then they really respond.
We got the odd ones in Berlin.
Once in a while, they don't respond.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna, I really don't.
Not for this time, right?
Nope.
All right, we'll figure something out, appreciate it, all right, so, where are we at, special committee reports?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing, do we need to do an ordinance committee?
We do, but I was gonna wait till the next town council, I have a couple things to put together before you do, you meet.
Sounds great, any other special committees, we have a-
Playing fields, I know that the parking rec one had the playing fields meeting, and there was one more that I was gonna send you a note on, I'll have those for the next meeting.
Who's on the, somebody's on the plane?
I'm on, Peter's on it.
You guys are on it, okay, all right.
Maybe Julian's on it, I'm not sure.
Oh, good, okay, any other special committee, we're good, council of communications?
I just wanted to piggyback on something, something Jack said about the jail cells, I was in a walk-through in New London, and it was just a refurbishment of their cells, painting, flooring, simple, but they have a, a plan to weld plates on their existing doors to save money, to eliminate the hazard of, you know, someone trying to commit suicide, so I talked to the Public Works Director, you know, Berlin was, we had a plan that we were gonna go in with two other towns on new doors, and it fell through, so I was interested in what the design was, and if they would share it, so I forwarded that information to Jack, and that's what Jack mentioned before, that we'll take a look at it, and we're all in the same boat, they're in the same boat, they're trying to save money, and they may have a plan, and they volunteered to say, hey, if we're the guinea pig for this, we don't have a problem sharing our ideas, so, I just forwarded that information to Jack, and-
Doug and John, Doug and the chief are gonna go take a look at those.
Okay, they are, I don't think they've done the work yet, but-
Well, I, they, they're gonna go down and meet with the-
Oh, good.
-the Public Works Director there, and, and, and talk about it, so, I, I did take yours, and we, we, you know, we thought that we would at least follow up on it.
Okay, excellent.
As far as council, I'm sorry, did I butt in?
No, no, no.
I was just gonna mention a couple things during communications.
Yes.
First off, that C C H D, the Central Connecticut Health District, quite a few months back, I, Pat Checo had come here and was talking about the recovery initiative workshop that she was putting together in this group, and they've met several times, Karen was involved in a couple of the meetings, as was I, but they're going to be having a community conversation that's going to be hosted at Wellspring Church on September 13th, and, it's just really, their goal is to create communities that are more supportive to those in recovery, and it'll involve four surrounding towns, Berlin, Newington, Weathersfield, and Rocky Hill, and it's just talking about really establishing a friendly, a recovery-friendly community, so, I think it would be really important, considering the issue that we were having here, not only, you know, in Berlin nationally, but that we've been affected-
What time is it?
A great deal, light refreshments are at 6:30, and then the, the actual forum is between 7:00 and 9:00, the program.
Oh, okay.
And, and I also attended the presentation, the strategic plan and study presentation regarding our elementary schools.
Oh, yeah, now, there's another one Thursday, now.
Well, Thursday, I think will be a little bit more comprehensive-
Okay.
-because this was just the presentation on Monday night.
Yeah.
Thursday night, they'll do the presentation again, and then people will have the opportunity to-
Right, okay.
-to ask questions.
Oh, good, that's at the high school, right, on this memo?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
At 7:45.
How was that, interesting?
Interesting, some of it was promising, some of it not so much.
Oh, great, well, whatever, good and bad.
So, you know, I mean, unfortunately, I can't be there Thursday night, because I have a, a prior fundraising commitment, but, I mean, anybody here that can make it, I think-
Try and get there, yeah.
You know, it's, it's important, I'll be interested in what you have here.
Yeah, great, thanks, anyone else?
I just need a note when I get home that I was here the whole time.
All right, we'll, we'll sign it out for you, we'll sign it out for you, I'm sorry, hey, just, you're all, Lenny Tubbs just emailed me, and, just the other day, so you're all, obviously we're all invited to the Berlin Fair, opening ceremonies are, you know, a week from Friday, and at-
I mentioned, yeah.
-11, at 11 o'clock, so, it's, they're still not clear on the whole new dates, right, I'm still messed up with that, but, I guess the weather's better, right, so, and, that's it, just-
They're open Thursdays now, too, which I completely forgot they opened-